All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Today is December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. We have a study session today in regards to the special meeting that we're going to be having. And maybe about forty-five minutes, regular city council meeting. This particular one is most specifically in regards to a study session on three new positions that are being proposed by administration. And we're going to give our council members, the audience, residents, et cetera, an opportunity to be able to get, A, clarification regards to these positions, and B, to be able to ask any questions that they may have, whether it's council members or those in the audience. Those in the audience and on Zoom, I will of course give you an opportunity to be able to speak. They'll just be after the council members if you don't mind. So at this particular point, I'm going to ask the mayor and our current city engineer to give us just a little abbreviation as far as these positions. And then we'll start with questions from council members.
Council chair. Okay, so for the last close to two years, you know, we've been putting a lot of grants in.
Mike, it's on.
It's on. So we have, we have obviously the funding scout that you guys approved. And with the help of Mr. Deeb and Mariana, working on some of the grants, you know, we have close to thirty million dollars in grants right now allocated to us. And also, we have, you know, I mean, you were in a meeting with Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib the other day. And she, she mentioned that we have more money coming in. That's in addition. And we also have money that's supposed to be coming in from Congressman, also three tenador from the other side, you know, from a portion of Dearborn Heights. So with all the money coming in, there's going to be a lot of work. You know, there's going to be, you know, we need, we need more, more people to help, to help us out. You know, I mean, you know, more than anybody, even on council, you and councilman Constant the most. So you've seen, you know, that we are, we are short staff. So in order to, we have the money that we're getting, a lot of it is obviously restricted. And we have to spend it in a very short time, probably two years, and maybe, you know, some of it less than two years, two, two and a half years, some of it. And the money that needs to be spent is also, obviously, is a lot of it is federal money that every, every dollar has to be accounted for. So we really have to monitor it very well. So obviously, we have also, you know, listening to the council for the last two years, you know, I know we had some miscommunication, lack of communication, bad communication, whatever, you know, we want to call it, but it was lack of communication, obviously. That, you know, I can tell you, we're moving very fast, you know, with the short staff that we have. And we just need to have somebody to, to be able to communicate, you know, some of the stuff that we're working on. We need somebody to actually be responsible for some of the things that we're working on. So just to give you an example, so we'll start with city engineer. So there's been a lot of, you know, going back and forth, you know, with contracted services with that position, with a city engineer. So obviously, that position, we decided to bring it in-house. And in the charter, it mentions a city engineer. So, so we are going to bring in the city engineer in-house. So the city engineer will be a city engineer, so be responsible for any engineering services in the city of Dearborn Heights. Anything from, you know, residential, commercial, you know, city property, anything. And as you know, you know, we have money allocated for the fire station. So that, we're not going to make the same mistake that was done in the past. You know, spend millions of dollars in something that is going to last less than twenty years. So we definitely, you know, with the, with the amount of money that the city of Dearborn Heights gets with the lack of funding, you know, we want to try to maximize every dollar that we're getting into, into the city. So we do have to hold people accountable. We do have to have, you know, better staff to help us and guide us for the next three years. And again, this is not just the thirty millions and also the about fourteen million, million dollars that we have also with ARPA. So we're talking close to forty-five million dollars that we have to spend in two and a half years. That's a lot of money. With the, the city of Dearborn Heights has never had that much money to spend in the short, especially in the short amount of time. In the sixty years of history of Dearborn Heights, we've never had that. So with that, the city engineer is going to be very crucial for, for us to make sure that everything that we're building in the city of Dearborn Heights, that we, we, we brought that in-house. So we're going to do the engineering, you know, with my background as an engineer, the last thing you want to do is subcontract engineering work to somebody that doesn't have the interest, you know, you're just paying somebody basically that doesn't have the, the passion for the city. You know, it's not really working for the city like we've had in the past. So that's the city engineer's position, basically. What they're director of asset management, you know, that position is also.
I don't need to interrupt. I just got one question. Would the city engineer position be different than what Ali Deep already does?
No, he's going to be the same. It's going to be the same position.
It's Ali Deep.
Well, we're just shifting it. Yeah, it's going to be a full-time person instead of contract.
But we were always a full-time person.
No, we're, no, sorry, councilman. It's part, it's actually getting paid by the hour, so it's part-time. So we're going to bring Ali Deep in full-time.
Ali Deep used to be part-time?
Yes.
We worked a lot of hours for part-time.
Well, you're talking about the most recent contract.
Yes.
Yeah.
Are we talking questions or?
No, no, no. I just had a question.
So, okay, with that, so Mr. Deeb is actually, I mean, since we mentioned his name, in the past, we, we have two meetings a month, that we have the planning and the zoning meetings, right? So I can't remember, for refresh my memory, Mr. Deeb, we're paying like, what, a thousand dollars per, per day, per meeting? So we're paying a thousand dollars per meeting for somebody from an engineer to be there, a contract engineer. Mr. Deeb has been there. He's volunteering to be there. Since, since he's been here, he's been volunteering his own time.
He's also there during those meetings.
Yes. Yeah, so he, he's been in that meeting. So we don't need contracted services for that anymore. We haven't had that service. So he saved us, you know, just, just take the two years or so he's been here for every meeting, probably hundred, hundred, over a hundred thousand dollars, just in that, just those two meetings. So we do need a full-time person, also because this, this, this job is going to be full-time. It's not.
Mayor, sorry. How many meetings of planning, zoning commissions you have?
It's supposed to be once a month for each one, so that's.
That's twenty-four.
That's two meetings, two meetings a month for one planning, one zoning. And Mr. Deeb has been going to both of them.
That's totally. So we saved around.
For two years.
For two years. We saved around a thousand dollars each meeting.
And plus whatever amount of time that they, they work on trying to get packages together. So they don't just be, they're not just there for the meeting. Also, for every meeting, they reject their spending thousands of dollars and going back and saying, okay, we have to revise this sentence or this paragraph. So they go back and they're charging us more for prepping documents. So it's not just the meeting that we're paying for. We're also paying for their services, other services that they're doing just to prepare for these meetings. That's a thousand just to be at the meeting.
Yeah, let's, I'm, I'm allowed to maybe do another three, four minutes, whatever, on the last position. So. And then we'll get an abbreviation from Mr. Deeb.
Bless you. So the, the second position we want to add is the director of asset management. And, you know, I, I did send you all, all this information, so I'm just going to skim through the stuff. And I did also send you an org chart, right? So that position, once, just, just to give you one example, the fire station. Once we build the fire station, Mr. Deeb is going to be in charge of the engineering part of it, right? So we need somebody to make sure that it's maintained, you know, that, make sure that everything is being built over there. So Mr. Deeb is not going to be there twenty-four seven to make sure if, if there's, like, say, you know, a hundred PSI compressor that has to be there. That person will make sure that, that, that compressor that we're paying for is going to be there. So the brand, whatever they quote us for, the asset management is responsible for that. The asset management, manager, management director will also be responsible for something that we, we've discovered. There's no preventative maintenance program in the city at all. You know, it's when something breaks, we, we sometimes, we have to borrow money from somewhere, from another fund. We have to reallocate money to fix certain things. The city, we had a, a power out, you know, you guys all remember that. Our police station, the dispatch was shut down. We have to shift our dispatch for a couple of days to Dearborn because somebody did not do preventative maintenance on a generator, the backup generator at the police station. So if we had somebody direct, I mean, that could have been a nightmare for us. But thank God, you know, we had, luckily, we had the leadership in the police that we did. We were able to get the resources and be able to work with Dearborn, partner with them on just dispatch to make sure our city stays safe. Also, we have a lot of property, lot of lots, a lot of homes that we, we have currently that is not, we're paying, we're paying on all, the maintenance, we're paying on all of that stuff. So we need to get rid of that property. And for, just to give you an example, we, I think we have about thirty-something homes roughly right now. Plus, we have, I think, few commercial property, and we have probably like a hundred lots that we need to get rid of. So imagine if we get rid of all of that stuff in one year. We estimate it's going to be between five hundred thousand to a million dollars just for, just for that portion. And that person will, will also be looking at grants. You know, there's never been a capital improvement program for any building. If anything breaks down and any property that city owns, you know, we have to figure it out, figure it out a way where we're going to get the money. So that person will be in charge of also the capital improvement plan, you know, for every building the city owns. So the last one, real quick, on the director of community relations. Every city has somebody that does, you know, community relations between, it's not just a person that is between the mayor and the council, it has to be also with, with the residents. The council, I said, you guys take a lot of calls. You know, you, you got to be able to call, you know, if you call a particular director, you don't get a hold of the director, you got to wait, or there, there's concerns, you want to get something taken care of. You, you go straight to that person. And there's also going to be a lot of public hearings. So those public hearings, you know, that person be responsible for that because a lot of the money that we're getting, you got to do public hearings. So that person will be responsible to put that stuff out just to make sure there's great communication between the administration, the council, you know, the, the clerk's office, the treasurer's office, the residents. So that, 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 that position is also very key into everything that we're, we're getting, you know, like I said, about close to forty-five million dollars. And it doesn't stop at the forty-five million dollars. Even as we speak, we're still looking for other funding. We're still working with every, both Congress members and also our two state senators. I'm sorry, two US senators and also our state rep, you know, trying to get other fundings for other things. You know, for parks, you know, for city buildings, for recreation, you know, for, you know, for, there's a lot, like I said, there's a lot of work that we're doing right now, and we just don't have the time to slow down. We need a person to make sure everything, every communication is being flowed to the council and also to the residents.
Okay, so I, I, I could tell for those residents in the audience and maybe on Zoom, the amount of money coming into City Hall, we're blessed. In my eight years on councils, the biggest amount of money that we've had coming in, and this is almost like our full budget, so that's a lot of money. And then this is one of the reasons that administration is proposing that they have people in place to be able to do this. What I'm going to do at this particular point, I'm going to have Mr. Deeb, Ali Deeb, if you could give us maybe like about a three, four-minute abbreviation. And then I'm going to take it to questions from council members. And then from there, we'll go to questions from the audience, please. So go ahead, Mr. Deeb.
Okay, so as the mayor indicated, thank you, council chair. We, the administration, in the last two or three years, I've been with the city for two and a half years, almost three years now. We have looked at the existing organization and where we want it to be. And we've taken an extreme detailed look at some of the stuff that we did not address or we weren't equipped to address. And, and the biggest issue was, the, the largest issue in my opinion was the lack of planning, the lack of capital improvement. And then one of the largest issues that we were facing is the lack of facility management. So most of these things were, it's not, it's not a reflection on any of the people that we have. We just did not have the right people. We, we don't have facility management of any kind. We have building maintenance. That's about all we have, which is a, you know, you're not a preventative maintenance. You're not doing, so issues like the neglected bridges, the buildings that we have, the fire departments, roof maintenance doesn't exist, you know, things of that nature. And that is what the, the facility manager was supposed to be looking for. Preventative, predictive, and scheduled maintenance. So your asset can last, can last, and you can actually do that. This, I'm not going to cover the city engineer because I think we, the mayor did a great job. The city engineer is the person who is responsible for the technical portion of the city. In the past, the city relied on the contract employee from a, a private company. But that person was covering multiple cities. So, so things like, I'm actually going through the reports of the bridges now. With, you know, by annual inspection of all the bridges, well, I've gone back to twenty-twelve. And there were issues that the city brought up, the state brought up in every inspection, you know, that, you know, that, that needed urgent attention. One, we did not find the reports in the city. No one ever read them in the city, and no one did anything with them. In fact, there is no budget for, to do any work on them. So there is no preventative or scheduled maintenance. As the mayor indicated, what we did is we waited for things to fail, and then we'll just go ahead and, and, and fix them. That's not going to happen going forward. So what they have before you, the organization charts that you have before you, look at as the result of that, that internal investigation, if you will, what are the shortcomings? Now, this is important because, as the mayor indicated, we are getting a lot of money. And so we, we intend to build it the right way going forward. But in order to do that, it's a team effort. I need to be able to turn it over to someone and say, now, the new fire station is going to be under a strict preventative maintenance schedule. So if I have a fifteen-year roof, I don't want you to come back in twenty-five years and say, I have a new roof. Case in point, the, the police building, that's not a new roof, that's a roof beyond its useful life. It was never maintained. And, and it's not a reflection on, on anyone. We don't have, we did not have the process or the system in place to look at these things and manage them. You know, this is just one example. Bridges, roadways are the same way. Why are the roads in the same, in the conditions they are in? You know, they're preventative maintenance, you know, that was never happened. So this is the kind of stuff that we're looking at currently. So going forward, we do it as we build new with all the money that we're having. And by the way, it is two-year, the money goes back to the government if it's not spent in two years. So there will be a lot of money to be spent. And the number I'm, I'm playing, I'm looking at now is probably over fifty million. So there's still some in the, in the work, and we look, we're looking good to get more money. So what we're, what we're trying to do here is to have the, the staffing that we need internally to handle that work properly and, and be, and be successful. The last person I need, you know, the last position, the ombudsman. Public relation is critical. I mean, we're facing, most of our work is going to be in areas where we have to interact with the public. I was just telling councilwoman today that we have this little issue with smoke testing on the south end on Beach Daily. And something that is part of the CSO, and there's, you know, I, I just don't have the person to do it, to be the liaison between the administration and, and the public and follow-up. And when people start calling tomorrow, I'll probably end up getting the calls. So this is the kind of stuff that we're trying to do. It is a good organization chart. If you look at it, there are right people, a right position, not people, right positions for the work that we're trying to do. It's as simple as that.
And I'm sorry, I forgot to mention the water meters, you know, that, you know, we're blessed to have the money for the water meters right now, that it's not going to be on.
Did that money guarantee, did it come in yet official? We're, we're. I know, because last time you said you were waiting on to hear.
It is.
So it's a hundred percent official?
It is, it is on their schedule, so I know you want the money in the bank.
No, no, no.
Yes, yes.
Do we have anything in writing that it's official?
The, in the writing, no, they actually.
You need, you need the council authorization. We gave it last week.
Yes.
So it's basically saying, based on, because you had mentioned based on the fact that once you get the authorization from the council.
Beside that, um.
Yeah, but it's still, from where I just, it's still formality, it still had to be eventually approved. It's not automatic.
Yes.
So then we don't have it yet. No.
So that's, that's a huge project, you know, that the city hasn't undertaken that, that kind of project, you know, probably like sixty years. I don't know how old these meters.
Sixty-three.
Sixty-some years. I mean, that's a lot older than, you know.
Okay.
And that's, yeah.
So what I'm going to do now, Ali, mayor, I'm going to allow for council members to go ahead and start with questions, then eventually I'll go to people in the audience. So just to make this simpler, we'll start with our councilwoman in case she has a question.
All right. Is this on the org chart only that we're talking?
Anything to do with these three positions?
Okay, well, when I look at it, I see four gray areas and something under building and engineering called building. I see four or five positions, I'm not sure.
You know what? I, I want to interrupt you for a second because there was something that me and Mr. Deeb spoke about. On the org chart, I'll show it to the audience. I want council members to look here. So the way it looks here, it looks like these positions here are under these positions. They're not. It's just on a, on this sheet of paper, on a sheet of paper, they couldn't put them all.
Correct.
To the left and right. So just to clarify, these are not positions below this one. And for those in the audience, you probably can't see it, but in the org chart that we were given, it's just the way it laid out on the paper, it looks like these positions are below this, and it's not. I don't know if.
Yeah, council chair. Council chair, I, I can explain. Okay, so. I mean, we can go here. So we, we have the director of asset management here, director of community relation here. So then the city engineer, the city engineer, obviously, you can't go all the way across as a woman.
I understand.
So I think you're talking about this one here.
Yes.
So this one here, all we, all what we're trying to do here, we're trying to show the interaction between the city engineer and also it's going to be part of planning and engineering. So that planning and engineering will be interacting with the city engineer and also with building, like, say, like, the Rook Lawlands, you know.
Now, is that a new position then or no?
No, 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 no. That just shows you that.
It's a segment of.
Yeah, it's a segment, yeah.
Okay. And the same with the, the building under building and engineering?
Yeah.
Okay, that was one I.
So the only three positions that you saw, councilwoman, is what you see here. The director of asset management, director of community relation, and the city engineer.
And then Department of Innovation and Technology, is that, is Cooper the director of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we, yeah, nothing.
And then Cable is a segment down from that.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, so we can actually, I mean, if we can get a, a larger chart, we can do that for you if you guys approve it. We can give you a chart on a larger sheet that shows, you know, everything across.
All right. Do we have people in mind for these positions at this point?
We, well, obviously, the city engineer sitting right in front of you. Yeah, so the other ones, you know, we're, we have, you know, we're, we're talking to, we have, probably talked to a few people to see who's best fit for these positions.
Okay, and they would follow through with these agendas and we would, descriptions?
Yeah, this, yeah, this, these will be their job responsibilities in here.
Will we be able to see resumes from the people who was to apply?
Yes, we can send them to you.
All right, that's all I got.
Anybody else on this side?
Thank you, council chair, briefly. So the director of community relations, now what happens is somebody has a complaint, they contact maybe a councilperson or the mayor's office, and then Mariana or somebody. This will be a person who can help with that process?
Yeah, so we can streamline it to that person, and that person can help the council because, I mean, just seven of you, so if you need anything, you can go straight to that one person. And that person can get a hold of the administration, you know, let us know. Or if we need something to float to the council members, they can do the same. And if there's something the council or the other two elected officials want to flow something to you guys or the, the residents, that person will be responsible for that as well.
Great, great. And then I noticed with the job descriptions, there was the deputy comptroller and the comptroller.
So the deputy comptroller is, is, it's not on here as a study session. We're trying to prove, because of the question that was asked at the last meeting, trying to get rid of a third party that is helping us with work, trying to up the salary so we can get a, make it more marketable for the comptroller because at the current salary, we cannot hire, we, we offered that, that salary, and nobody wants it.
But it's also a position that had previously been there, so this is not a new position. It's a position that had previously been there. They've tried to rehire somebody else, and we haven't had the success as administration because of the amount of pay. So all the proposals right now for the administration is to raise it. I believe it's thirty-three thousand dollars over and above what was previously advertised.
Council chair?
I'm just going to go in order if you don't mind.
I just want to add on to the, the comptroller position, since it's wrong there. But I know this is something we've asked HR, the administration, and I'm going to reiterate it again. When we're requesting for these job, job opportunities, and I, I have had this conversation with Roger, we need to go outside of just our, our, you know, community page. I mean, it needs to be on Facebook. I mean, it's great that we're putting things that think, hey, we're looking like we're hiring. But we can actually be a little bit more descriptive when we're going out on social media. All right, let's just call it for what it is. We're in the twenty-first century, hopefully soon the twenty-second century. And social media is just, you know, helps the world spin, and you're just getting a lot more of your information on there. It's great to say we're hiring cadets, but I've not seen anything else other than that our police department is hiring or we're hiring. So maybe for a little bit more descriptive on the things that we're hiring on, maybe we'll have more opportunities for, for people, and we'll grab more of their attention.
Maybe we can attach a link to the post.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I think we need to do a little better on that, but that's just my two cents on that.
Okay, thank you, councilman, Councilman Abulhak.
Thank you. Mayor, those positions are head of departments.
You guys speak into the council.
Okay, so.
Those are heads of departments.
So if you look at the job descriptions, as of right now, there is, the positions that we have, they don't have nobody reporting to them. So they're going to be their own, their, their own entity.
Since they report to you, they will be head of department, I assume, because nobody else reports to you unless they are head of departments.
Yes.
The charter call on head of department to be established either by charter amendment or by ordinance. Correct, councilor?
I believe that you answered.
Your mic is off.
Sorry, I believe you answered it last time. You're asking if these positions need to be created by an amendment?
Absolutely, yes.
I don't think so.
Yes, it is. Charter is clear, we done that with the library when we separated from the recreation, we done that with another.
I looked at that vote in two thousand and seven.
Two thousand fourteen, in two thousand ten.
Actually, in two thousand and seven. And it was one of the three amendments to separate the, the library and the parks and recreation. That was the vote. And there was confusion as to that vote, so I'm still looking into that.
Okay, I suggest you read five twelve, section five twelve from the charter. And I recommend to the city council not to do this because we will be in violation of the charter. Either we come up with an ordinance or with a charter amendment before we take any step.
I, I'd just like to, okay, go ahead.
Water meter, Mr. Ali, when do you expect the millions of dollars to come in? How long time was?
The time is not, the timing for that water meter of funding, the eight and a half million is the state. So we are going down the list now. They asked us to do a project evaluation. We just submitted it Monday, yesterday. And so we're following, they will release the funding to us. So I'm following the state Drinking Water Act funding. So it's really, so we're, we're following their proposal. It is twenty-six technically.
So twenty twenty-six.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we have these two years before we see that. I'm just following that, there are millions, make me very happy that millions come into the city. But I want to know when they going to come to the city.
Just let me finish, yes. So I'm trying to get started before that because the eight and a half, the project itself, just to keep in mind, is twelve. Is, is estimated at twelve million and some change. So we do have the remainder of the money in the old bond. So remember, I, I went through the, the explanation a couple of meetings ago and how much money we have.
Close to seven.
We do have.
Close to seven million dollars.
We do have some of that money left. So I'm trying to convince the state to use our portion because it's not going to happen overnight, right? So we're not going to do the entire twenty-five thousand meters in one shot. So I'm trying to convince, working with the state, so can we at least not use your money? Because if I start using their money without their approval, then I lose it. So I'm trying to work with them to see if we can start phase one, do one area using our portion without risking the loss of the state, and they haven't replied to that yet, but we're working with them.
Normally, do we, do we have to spend the money upfront? Then we apply for the money to be reimbursed.
So it's a reimbursable grant, yes, that's how it works.
I would assume we're talking about probably two thousand twenty-eight before we receive that money if we, if we start working and spending our own money. So this project at least need a couple of years, I would assume.
Yes, so, but let, let me, so instead of spending the money and working and sending them the invoice and reimbursement, I'm working with them so we can get the invoice directly to them, so it gets spent. You know, we do progress payment, right? So currently, the way, and it's not fully designed yet. We currently have that, the project envisioned at the city being divided into seven areas. And there is a reason for that. So the seven areas, we can start on those areas. And then, and then in my last coordination with the designer, the seven areas are going to, we're including more work in the area than just the water meter. So we have. So um, we have um, um lead line, which is another grant, right? So the lead line replacement, it makes sense while you're in the building or in the house, replacing the meter to look at the lead line. And if it is lead, you can replace it. So there are a lot of elements that are getting into it, but yes.
Okay, I'm gonna interrupt both of you guys for just a second. We're, we're getting off track now. Now we're getting out of the water.
I'm gonna ask.
So that's, you know, I, I understand your answer to your question, but if, if, if that's a question you're gonna ask, let's ask it as it pertains to the three positions. Because I wanna stick with the study session material, that the information was given, that they're gonna, they're gonna look at.
No, I understand. I'm just saying, just make sure.
This is a part of the job.
I know, I'm saying, I'm making sure it's pertaining there, that's all.
It is. That's his duty to do the, this, that's part of his duties, which is written.
I know, but I don't wanna go into a study session on the water meter, that's all.
I'm not, I'm just asking questions, you know, financially, are, we, I mean, we hearing like fifty million dollars coming to the city. And I wanna see when we're going to receive this money, uh, you know. That is very important for me and the residents to know. Are we really receiving this money or are we going to wait until, you know, twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-six?
Okay.
Uh, now, the, the second, the second one. Director of Asset Management, we do have BPW, we have a director. And we have, I believe, two superintendent, they are responsible for the maintenance of the building. They are responsible for all these facilities in the city and they supposed to maintain them. They supposed to monitor, they supposed to know exactly the condition of every building, of everything, every car, every item we have in the city. Are we going to eliminate their jobs or they are not doing their jobs? So we bringing somebody to overlook those people.
You have preventative, you have a maintenance department, building maintenance. You do not have facility manager. You don't. Facility manager is not a maintenance person. Facility, facility manager actually uh, uh manages facilities. Look at preventative maintenance program, evaluate the facilities, find out what conditions they're in. Not, not uh, uh, building maintenance. He's not out there doing maintenance. The maintenance staff is not being eliminated. Maintenance, building maintenance will continue to do what they do today, is building maintenance. But the, the management of the facility is much more than the building maintenance. You know, um, um, looking at asset, and it's not the building, it's the entire asset. So, so I said earlier, um, the reason I premature failure on my streets was, it was near, narrowed down to one reason. It's not being maintained by meaning that the joints were never replaced ever. So there is no program, there is no preventative program uh in the city for anything that we built. Whether it's buildings, roads, roofs, mechanical system, anything. We do not have an asset manager in the city. And this is what this position is. It's not a maintenance person at all.
Mister Deep, the reason I'm asking this, if the two positions are overlapping and they do the same job, the charter prevent us from creating another uh, another position for something which already in existence.
What positions?
I would be very careful if that is the case.
It is not.
Now, the embattment, there are two issues for the embattment. Are we hiring somebody to investigate wrongdoing in the city or somebody who's going to do something else?
Which it, I tell you, it's definitely not to investigate.
That's not an investigator, that's a.
Embattment means, if you look at the federal standards, the federal definition for it, it is somebody basically, if somebody complain about something which is wrong in the city. That's the job of the embattment to come and do it. Is this part of it? There are two things. I really want to thank Rachel Lapone. She sent email. I wish you guys read it. It's a few pages. But she done a beautiful job. She put lots of time into it and I think she's spot on on every uh point. And I hope that the city council read it, please, before you make any decision tonight.
Council chair.
I, I, if you don't mind, Mister Mayor, I just wanna point out something earlier um in our conversation. Um, Councilman Al Ghulak mentioned in regards to this could be against the charter. And it could be or it could not be, but I just wanna clarify something. We could still as a body approve some, something subject to being within the legal confines of the charter. In other words, if it's not like the council was saying, then obviously it would make it void. So we are still able to, to make that decision. Additionally, obviously, our corporation counsel can, can give us an opinion on that.
Council chair, I really strongly and strongly disagree with you and I hate to say this. Because we do not want to basically violate the charter, then we come back and say, oops.
No, 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 no. What that would mean is, we're voting on the positions. If we let you, you choose the hypothetical, we approve the positions. If we approve the positions, we can still approve them subject to being within the confines of the charter, at which point we will get an official opinion, whether it's tonight, but I don't wanna put the corporation counsel on the spot. Or maybe tomorrow or whatever it is, make sure that this is within the confines of the charter, that's all I'm saying. Because anything that's against the charter, we can't.
I agree, I agree. And I got the charter section up. It says, the city council has the power to, authority to establish. So let's say, for example, uh, in Department of I- IT, years ago, we didn't need that, so, but, you know, that position, we, we, we can create it. Councilmen Zuhair.
And I wanna clarify, the mayor is bringing a particular position forward. Just because the mayor brings it forward doesn't make it official. It only becomes official when the council approves it. Therefore, when the council approves it, that's when it becomes uh authorized and established officially.
Right.
Okay.
I would like.
And I, I would add, it wasn't.
I would like you really to review five to twelve, section five twelve, section five eleven B. And the section five seven A, before we move with anything and we have, those are very important issue. We committing the city to close to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in salaries and benefit. Because those are salary, the plus benefit, the plus pension. So this is a huge amount of money. We may not have it in the budget. And I need an actuary report to see if the budget can really withstand this kind of money. Okay, we are spending money and we are appointing, we doing all these things. Do we have the money? We haven't been able even to pay the money for the ARPA, for the employees, for heaven's sakes.
The, the uh council chair, the, the language used was directed, not a department or commission. So, and when I think of a department, I think of staff, I think of other people with it. I'm just saying that what was presented to me on the five twelve, it was not a department or commission. It was only one individual for each of these positions and a director, American appoint director. So I looking at it, I don't mind, you know, if you want me to do more study on it, but I didn't see secretarial staff, I didn't see um assistants. I didn't see anything else to formally establish a department or a commission under five point one two, one two.
Rajar.
That's, that's what I'm saying, was presented as individual.
City engineer.
People to do.
City engineer will be working and supervising. That's what you guys saying in your uh job description.
But he's doing what he's doing.
They will be managing people, they will be directing people. Probably they don't have directly staff in their office, but they will be in supervision, you know, position. Where they can tell people what to do, what, you know, what to perform. So please, before we go any further, I'm not trying to make it hard. I want the city to move forward.
You're not making it difficult, but.
But I want him to be done the proper way.
I, I would just add to that, that it's the same function duties he's been performing already. So there was nothing else added in terms of staff or anything else to create a department. But he's been functioning in that role over the last year, since he started when he was as, as a part-time. As I said, he's been doing all this, so it's not a department being created and, and in any of these positions. And it's just doing functions that have been over here and over here. It's consolidating them for the embattment position. To take, take ease and direct and consolidate the, the work and, and, and get a, get a, um, get, give accountability to the, to the people who call in. And that's what the embattment position and the other financial direction is not a separate department. But it is a function that's continued, it's already been existing, it's consolidating.
I'm again not.
But that's how I read it.
I'm not against those positions or who, if the mayor has the power to appoint. I just want it to be done according to the charter, so we are not in violation of something we regret later on. That's all, and I move on.
Mister Mayor, you had a, you had a comment and then I'll make a comment and then councilman will be doing, go ahead.
No, I'm just saying, it's five, section five eleven. Section five eleven B, it's, it has city engineer on here.
Yes, it does. It does.
Okay, so um, a couple of questions that I have either for the mayor, us with comptroller or uh, Mister Deep. Paying for these positions, obviously these positions come at a cost, whether it's pensions or whether it's salaries, et cetera, et cetera. Do we have the funding available to be able to pay for? I know we have money in the general fund, but obviously I always wanna leave a little leeway there. Do we have enough? The first question is, do we have enough money to be able to pay for it?
Ye- yes, obvi- yeah, we do. That's why we put these positions in. Again, you know, this is gonna be necessary positions to be able to go through to everything that we have for the next, you know, several years.
Okay.
So we are get, take it out of the general fund.
So the next question I would ask is, just like when you're running a business, you ask yourself when you either create a position or when you do some sort of advertising or when you do an expansion of a business. The question that's always asked when you're running a business, is it gonna pay for itself? So is what we're bringing forward with these three positions, is it gonna pay for itself in terms of either savings? Or possibly bringing in additional money like we did, for example, the grant writer of the grant uh company. Bringing in, is it gonna be better services only? Or is it gonna pay for itself or is it gonna be savings? Which one of those three is it primarily?
It's gonna be all three, council chair. It's gonna, especially with the money that we have to spend. We cannot, we cannot afford to lose one grant. If we, if we have to pay one grant back to the government, that's gonna be very detrimental to the city. So we can't afford to even lose one grant. Even like, you know, the grant that we're talking about, the water meters, you know, something like that, you know, it's few million, few million dollars that we actually were not taking a loan or doing bond like they did several years ago in eighteen or so. So we're not taking any money out. We're trying to use money, well, it's not free money, it's taxpayers' money, but not the city of Dearborn Heights taxpayers, obviously.
Okay.
But we, we do have to spend that money and we do have to very, be very ca- very careful. And we do, we do need the, the people to actually help us out. Because we're still, we haven't stopped yet. We're still seeking other funding. We're not saying, you know what, we're done getting money. You know, we're still working with the funding scout. You know, Mister Deep, Mariana, uh, they're still working on trying to get other grants. This is not gonna stop. You know, like I mentioned for the last several meetings, you know, city of Dearborn Heights was lacking so much, you know, this is sixty years, it hasn't been anything done. The water, the sewer system, everything is obsolete, you know. A lot of other cities that actually, a lot older than us are in better shape. I go to meetings with the DCC communities and CWW, they've never heard some of the stuff that happens to us, you know, Dearborn Heights. So we're still seeking other money and I can tell you, we got that tension from federal and also state folks about the stuff, the money that we need for the city and even the lead. You know, we still haven't gotten rid of all the lead lines and there's, there's, there's a lot of lot of talk right now. Even y- you heard it the other day from the congresswoman, they got this lead out caucus. And you know, it's gonna be a lot of millions coming in, you know, to cities that willing to go a hundred percent, no lead lines in the city. So just that project is gonna be so huge. We cannot afford to, to miss anything. We, we can't, we can't skip anything. We, we put this out, you know, we're here to, you know, we're here full-time, we know what the city needs. And this, these, these positions, some of the stuff we're asking for, and out of respect for the council, you know, we put it here so you guys can be part of the process to approve it. You know, because, you know, we need to work as a team, again, to move us forward. You know, we have a lot of projects in place right now. We need people to help us with it. And we still have to work on other, other things that we still have to do on a daily basis, council chair.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm, I'm gonna add to, to this answer. Uh, council chair, the, the, the value of these positions, uh, uh, in addition to what the mayor indicated. The preventative maintenance is, is critical because it extends the life of what you're paying for today. So we're replacing pavement. We just did five streets, right? I got two and three in the spring. These, 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 these fully replaced full streets, right? These things, if you don't maintain them, the concrete should last about twenty-five plus. If you do not maintain it and replace the joint in seven years, you, you, you'll be replacing it just like you did on Sheehan in nine years. So this is, and at, at, at two point six million dollars a mile, it, it can add up quite a bit. Your budget, your current budgets, when we put these together, I looked at details, your, your, your mayor, the mayor indicated, uh, gave you an example of the deadline. We have in our budget for the last many years, as long as I can review, uh, two million dollars per year for, for lead line, right? So for to remove lead line every year in your budget. Well, we just got three, thirteen and a half million dollars to go, to do all of them. You just freed up two million dollars per year. So this is, this is a saving, it's a direct saving to us. I just freed up two million dollars per year from my current operating budget. Because we were able to get the thirteen and a half million dollars to do all of it. So yes, it, it, it is, it is.
It is gonna pay for itself, in your opinion?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Well, even, council chair, I'm sorry, I keep interrupting. We were just a few weeks ago, we had a meeting with Plan Moran and attorneys.
Yeah.
And they were proposing that we do put another bond for the wa- for the water meters.
Yeah.
And we just kept waiting, kept waiting, because we knew there was something coming from the, from the feds and the state. So thank God we waited long enough for them to come back and to say, you know what, we're gonna help Dearborn Heights. And it could have been thirteen million dollars, the taxpayers were, Dearborn Heights taxpayers would have to pay for.
Pay, right.
In addition to the twenty-something million that we took out, that the water fund is paying for.
Okay, that's what we doing.
Thank you, councilman. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, Ali Deep. Uh, thank you guys for being here today. Council chair, uh, looks like we're witnessing another last meeting of yours. Um, this is what, I have a couple of things here and.
Really?
No, no, no. As I go, white flag, I'm done.
Vince likes that.
So I have a couple of things here and I see our comptroller over here. And, you know, I remember having these discussions with our comptroller during budget hearings and our former comptroller, including the mayor. Uh, saying that we are way overspending. Um, and regardless of the money that's coming in, which we have none thus far. Um, these are verbatim the comptroller's words. We are overspending, guys. Am I right, comptroller? Those are your words. I'm not, I'm not making it up.
Everybody heard it.
I mean, regardless, we're, we're not here to, I mean, we're not in a courtroom. I'm not holding you accountable. I don't know. Those are words were said, we are overspending. I. There's no timeframe on that comment, uh, counselor. I don't.
Roger, Lynn, you'll find it quick, right?
I, I don't know the date of, of what you're referencing.
Just make your point though. Guys, the more the story is, I, I am in support of positions and bettering and moving our city. But I'm also here, I have a fiduciary duty as the mayor does, maybe not Roger, but every single else is sitting up here, including our clerk, our treasurer. Whomever it is that works for the city, we have a fiduciary duty to the city. I, I wanna support these positions openly. Uh, I think this is something that if the mayor feels he needs, needs this to move the city forward, by all means. But you also have to know that, yeah, as a part-time employee for the city, as a councilman, we, we have a fiduciary duty to ensure that the way funding is being spent is adequate. If I'm hearing from the professional, our comptroller and our former comptroller and our mayor, that we don't have enough money to spend the way we're spending or we are overspending money, then we create three new positions. It puts me in a position to like, I'm, I'm being strong like a rubber band here. We're spending too much money, but we're spending more money. Where are we getting this money from? But we have no money. And I'm not saying that we're broke, I'm just saying that these are the things that have been constantly said to everybody in this chamber. That's my first statement.
Counselor check, can I make?
I mean, I wanna answer what you just.
Let me just finish here. We keep talking about, you know, Mister Deep, and I don't, and I, I tell you how much I appreciate everything you say, but you, you said verbatim. We keep talking about how uh things keep failing in the city and we're having to continue to repair them and we're so stuck in the ages. But for the last three years that I've been on council, you've been with me here. So what have we done for preventative measures in these three years? Not talking about the past, but in these three years. Have we done, you can answer this one, I'm done with my list, but what have we done in these three years?
Okay.
In the very short period of time, what have we done to take those steps, aside from these three positions moving forward?
Okay.
So, and, and, and I only ask, and I know you're busy and you're a one-man show, but we have to, if we can't keep venting and dwelling on, on things in the past. If we have not taken the initiative in the step, but I'm gonna finish my things and I'll have you answer that as soon as I'm done with this one as well. Uh, building and maintenance. I think Zuhair touched on this one a little bit. Um, you know, with, with, with the, with the asset manager, I wanna make it very clear, we have a building and maintenance department. I don't know, again, we're part-time. I have a full-time job elsewhere, but I do know. But I do know according to the charter and according to employees in the city, we have a building and maintenance, two of them. And so these individuals that work for our city are either not doing a job or have a different role that we were, everybody here on council misunderstood. And it's, that's nobody's fault, but this is again, this is a good conversation, there's good communication. This isn't an attack on the administration or on Ali Deep or what these new positions are. It's just open communication with everybody here today. I also have here, uh, water meters. You know, this is, this is my cup of tea. We're at Riverside. I mean, I, I can't give you the exact date, but I'm sure if I ask the clerk and I, we go through it. We can find out when we were talking about this. This is something that you brought forward that we're going to spending our C S O bond. Uh, I could tell you it was in twenty twenty-one, maybe twenty twenty-two when we discussed this. And it was regarding water meters that we're going to get after we do projects one, two and three. Today, we're celebrating success on something that we haven't even received. We're, we're, we're celebrating on something that we could potentially be spending our own money, which might put us even in a higher deficit of a situation where if we had to spend our money in order to get it, we're not hurting ourselves. Because we might not have enough money to be able to cover forty percent, thirty percent, because we talked, it's twenty-two thousand, uh, homes or, or twenty-four thousand homes or, or meters that we need. At the expense, you know, that's could be up to twelve, thirteen million dollars. We don't know if we have that to put up front at first. Again, we don't have an actuary report, so at this point, I can't take he say, she said.
I'm going to give you the same que- answer I gave you when, three years ago, when you told, when you asked about the bond money that had.
We should have never got it and we should have told the state to come up.
No, no, I'm going to give you the same answer. The, the bond money that you sold in twenty-one for those projects were not enough for the projects. So we did, we did the projects in order because we had committed for the C S Os, one, two and three, and we did not have enough money to start the water meters. We knew that from, from ever since I came on board.
No, I'm going to have to disagree with you on that one, Mr. Deep. I'm so sorry. I love you dearly, but that is one hundred percent inaccurate and false.
Absolutely.
One hundred percent inaccurate and false.
Two hundred percent, sir, because I knew.
Well, then you know what? Maybe we need to start documenting more often, right?
Can you let him finish? Can you let him finish the answer, sir?
Enough money in the, in the bonds.
Roger, I was still speaking regarding my opinion.
No, he, you asked him a question. He was.
I did. I said that I was going to go through all of them in the beginning.
Look, we're all public servants.
Yes.
Okay, we respect each other. Please let him.
Roger, I was also speaking, I asked the mayor and Ali Deep to let me finish.
I'm not.
Go ahead. Thank you, thank you. Um.
He's doing it Rachel LaPointe style.
I'm, I'm just going to go through because this is what.
Holding questions.
This is what the council here prefers.
Let me know when you're done.
And Mr. Deep, I promise you, this isn't, this isn't a back and forth. Really, I, I don't need your opinion on, at the end of the day, if you don't feel like you want to give it to me in, in a more respected manner.
I'm giving.
But really, it seems like here, no matter what the council says here, I'm going to, so maybe I'm going to direct one more question to the mayor. Mayor, would one of these directors or one of your directors disrespects a council member? Who holds them responsible? Is it H R? Is it you? Who is it? Or do we just openly let them go, continue to disrespect this council? I'm going to tell you where I stand on this. Until this council feels like they're respected by your administration and by your directors, you're not going to get the same respect out of me as well. That's where I emotionally stand. And Roger, I don't need an opinion on you from that. I'm going to tell you exactly what happened.
Sir, I've been talking to you as I talk to you as city council representative. I ask respect and I expect a, a, the, the same from you.
Okay.
I give you respect.
So my question there is, when one of your directors or a current director disrespects a council member, how are we going to go about taking care of that? Will H R assist us? Will you assist us? Where are we going to draw the line that council demands respect? Because that's going to be one of my questions here and you may not feel that is, but I truly feel for the next.
I don't believe Ali Deep.
I'm not talking about Ali Deep. I'm speaking as a whole.
Okay.
Because it isn't the first time where a director disrespected a council member. I've had this discussion with other individuals here. We're not going to get, we're not going to get into the trenches, but it's happening. But I would also like an answer on that. Okay, those are my questions, guys.
Today, answer the questions, please.
Can you repeat the questions, uh?
That's why for those that come in the audience on a regular basis, this was Rachel LaPointe style. She has forty questions in two minutes and you don't know where to start.
Controller disagreed. We don't, we don't know if we overspend.
What?
We're in a bad position.
Counselor Chair, let me answer that one.
Okay.
Okay, we, we already answered that ques- question, councilman. Okay, so we talked about.
I'm sorry, Mary. Nobody answered that question.
No, 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 we talked about it already. So let me reiterate. Okay, so when you allocate certain amount of money to go to certain projects. Okay, just for example, we knew, we knew we're going to take money out for the, for the water meters. Because we knew the money that was taken out, I can't remember the exact date, the twenty-something million dollars. Okay, even though that money, I mean, that's another story, the way it was actually uh, cashed out like at first, instead of waiting in phases, that's costing us probably over a million dollars. Because we cashed it all at the same time without waiting for projects to come in. So the money that we're saving right now, for example, we talked about the lead lines. The lead lines, ever since I can remember, council chair, councilman Constan and also councilman Muscat retired, remembers back in the day, we would, we paid the city, the residents paid for the, the lead lines, correct? Council members, okay, we paid for it. No other city does that. You know, maybe very few. I've been, I've been in meetings with, for the last three years with every community in Western Wayne and D C C, everybody goes to federal funding or state funding for lead lines. I can't remember how much we paid. I know it was in the millions. Okay, as, uh, Mr. Deep mentioned, we have what, close to two million dollars we allocate to replace lead lines. Right now, the, the government has given us the money to replace the lead lines, so that's a saving. So the money that we can get from the lead lines, we can actually use that. Also, the other thing, there's, there's grants that were available for streets. So we never actually, we were the first city, even the city of Inkstore, our next door neighbor, were getting funding for streets. The city of Dearborn Heights never applied for it. Other cities has been getting funding for streets. So that money we're going to save on those streets, we can use that money as well. So there's a lot of money that we can take, even the interest money that we're going to save and not taking out bonds to do what we need to do, that's, that's going to be in the millions, uh, councilman. So when we talked about.
So we're going to shave off fat from other places to bring in to be able to cover this spot. I'm all for that. That's great. We need that in an actuary report and I, I appreciate that. I really do.
Okay.
The other question is, let's talk about the disrespect part, because that is something that's definitely going to play on my role. And I'm going to be completely honest with you. It's happening. And I can tell you, this council members here, many of us have been disrespected by council, and I'm not saying Ali Deep. I want to make that very clear. Ali Deep is a great man. One of, I, probably one of my favorite directors in the city. This is, he was just caught on the crossfires. Um.
All the time, I'm, you know. Must be, must be the blue shirt.
You know.
Collateral, collateral damage.
But I want you to know.
I want to put a white shirt on.
It's happening, mayor. Means you have had this conversation. H R is here, you are here, Roger has been informed. And my question is, when these three new roles come in and they feel they're untouchable, because that's how our current directors feel. Look, we're, we're, Roger, I know you can roll your eyes, but it's happening.
That was not rolling my eyes. When I want to roll my eyes, I'll roll it right in front of you.
Yeah, you do.
I'm answering your, I'm ready to answer your question.
Just answer it, Roger.
Because you came to me with a disrespect. I took the steps and talked to the chief about the specific incident that you brought forward and they're working on investigating it. Don't, don't conclude. Because it's ju- it's your side, but guess what? There's other sides. And everything has to be looked at completely, not just what you want.
I know.
Okay, I've been in public service since nineteen eighty-one. I worked with the N double A C P Legal Defense Fund. I worked with the Sada Peace Foundation nineteen eighty-nine. So we work.
Roger, it's what?
And we work in.
I'm not talking about the incident that happened.
And that was not public service. We are accountable to.
Okay, yeah.
All of them.
Roger, I'm talking apples, you're talking oranges.
Oh, no.
I'm talking, I'm asking the mayor a question. I'm asking, I'm.
We're way off track.
I know, but, but I'm not. My question is, when one of these directors, moving forward, disrespects a councilman, who do they report to?
Okay, but until we've hired and officially approved this, let's not go into what if something happens. Let's, let's leave this.
What's happening, council?
I understand. We'll bring it up at the co- regular council meeting. Okay, do you have all your questions answered by?
Honestly, but I don't really care. I was glad I was able to vent a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
You feel better now?
Yeah, sure. All right, uh, Councilman Ahmad.
Thank you, Councilor Chair. Uh, thank you, everybody for being here. Thank you, Mr. Deep. Uh, my first question is, uh, the proposed city organization chart, was that done by you or somebody else?
Uh, Mariana, I believe.
So my question is, first of all, I'm looking at it, is that D P W still in business?
Yeah.
Because it's not even, it's not even mentioned here. It's not mentioned. To be honest with you, I mean, I'm, it's not just, uh, for the past couple of months, I've been hearing about this organization chart about the city department and all we got is a one chart and the D P W is even missing from the chart. Um, huh. I mean, to, I don't know, probably it's just a typo, but I mean, to be honest with you, I expected way more. I mean, for a city organization chart, to see more, to understand more, I'm all, I'm all about data. I come from an engineering background too, just like our mayor. So I mean, what I'm seeing here, my first question is, okay, I do believe, well, per charter, the city engineer yourself is part of building and safety and then you're building an engineering department. So what, what's the purpose of moving the, and having a separate department by itself?
Well, planning and engineering is, is always its own. It's not, building department does what building departments do. The inspections, the building permits, the construction, the, um, you know, electrical, mechanical, plumbing and all that oversight and the processing and the permits and stuff. But so in the past, what you had is a contract employee, wait trim, and acting as a city engineer. So you, you relied on them and you also had a contract for planning, uh, with the mayor referred to, zoning and planning reviews. So what we're, what we're doing is, what other cities have is planning engineering. Now, it, it, it's, it's not a department, it's a unit that's separated because it provides services to other department, not just to the building. Building is just, so I, I consult business, uh, business with building. So the inspector, when they have an issue with engineering, that I go and look at it. The same with parks. So parks have issues. Every other department is the same way. D P W, I spend a lot of time with D P W now. I didn't prepare this, but you're right, it's missing. No changes are, no, no changes taking place. D P W is not being, so this, what you, what you, what we identified are the three positions needed to augment what we currently have. It's not replacing building maintenance at all. Facility managers are totally different, th- different animal, totally. And, and they're not doing building maintenance. They're oversight, they're providing oversight and facility, and you, you know, asset management. An asset is everything. It's not just building, you know, pavement is an asset, bridges are an asset. Everything the city owns is an asset. Parks are assets. So, uh, this is, the asset manager has nothing to do with a building, uh, uh, you know, maintenance department. The same with D P W. D P W is not be, is not being replaced. They will continue to do now, they can use more assistance and I provide a lot of my times. If you look at my time charges, I spend a lot of time with D P W because I'm trying to, and the same with parks.
I think it was just missed.
And it was just missed.
No, I mean, I mean, it's no big deal, but.
Councilman, real quick, can I, okay, so this software for this here is really, you know, it's, it's, it's not a good software for charts. So when we create, when we actually had this draft, we were just doing like copy. And we copied a cell and it was, again, my bad, it was admitted by mistake.
I mean, I was all about.
It would be added.
Having an I T director, I'm all about moving the city forward.
It would be added.
And, you know, hiring whatever we need. But moving on, since you mentioned the asset manager, I mean, all about having, you know, I'm, I mean, I'm an asset manager too myself, so I'm all about having an asset manager. But you know what? And it wasn't provided any data. Like I know the mayor said we have maybe, uh, thirty residential, hundred lots. I don't even know what the city owns. You, I wasn't provided any data, whatever we own, if we do need a city asset manager or not.
So it's not about the, just the property. That's just one portion of it. We're still missing. I'm trying to, the, the asset is, is, uh, asset, in my opinion, at least maybe I'm looking at it differently. And, and my, uh, professional experience, asset is everything the city owns. Bridges are an asset and I keep going back to bridges because they have been neglected as long as the city's been in existence.
No, I'm with you, but how, how come we don't have a list of whatever the city owns? And we're supposed to maintain.
You own fourteen bridges, twelve of them on the south.
I mean, all, everything. How come we don't have a list? Like if we have a list, like how many, how many properties we own? How many plots we own?
That's what we try to do.
Things we own, how many bridges we're supposed to maintain? I mean, I need data in order for me to see, oh, probably, yeah, we do need an asset manager to take care of this stuff. And, and in my own opinion, I think the asset manager needs to be with the D P double department, not a department by itself. Because I think it has to be linked somehow. He needs to maintain, I mean, he needs to hire, call somebody to maintain something. I mean, he needs to call D P W for that, doesn't he? Or he, or she?
So, so does engineering. So engineering does the same.
So I, so I think.
I mean, we, we're supposed to be a team. These, these positions are going to integrate with all the departments. Building is the same way.
I guess we have to work at the start then, make, make sure, I mean, somehow.
This is not a perfect chart. It is, it is not, but I, I have to say, this is, uh, this is a lot more than what we had before. We had no chart.
Uh-huh.
We're, we're trying, we're trying to improve on existing. This is not, I mean, it's a chart, not perfect.
Draft. Uh, but the community relation position, I mean, I'm all about community relations, but, um, I, I think, I do think too that it has to be an impartial position that, you know, probably uh, linked somehow, maybe to the council members too as well. Uh, I know the mayor said that we have the money, but yet I haven't seen, and I do agree with Councilman Baydoun, that the controller did say that we're overspending, even the controller before said we're overspending. And yet I haven't seen any financial budget evaluation in order for me, yeah, okay, with those position to be approved and we can spend the money. Uh, all I'm saying, just give me more data. Give me a better chart, give me more, give me more explanation. Tell me exactly what the city owns. Tell me the city, if we're able to financially to, you know, create those positions or not. And I do agree with Councilman Abdul Ha, too. I think, I mean, if we need to change something, I think it does need an ordinance. Uh, we, we do have to adopt a new ordinance or something. Uh, because I did look at the five twelve and I think we do have to do something regarding that. So I, I, I guess we have to look deeply into this before we jump into it. Uh, especially, like, I need more data. I need to know exactly what the city owns, what we're responsible for. And I need to know what the money is coming from.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilor.
Next up is Councilman Wenzel. Go ahead.
Thank you, Councilor Chair. That's a couple of statements with one question. First of all, you know, I'm really concerned about the disrespect we're getting also, and I'm a major recipient of a lot of disrespect from, uh, directors and different people in the, in the city. Um. The, the director of asset managers, management. Um. Our treasurer was asking for assets for a long time, buildings and property that we own, and I don't think we ever got a list.
Microphone, your microphone.
It's on.
Is it on?
Yeah, and, uh, our, our treasurer was asking for a list of assets, buildings and property, and I don't think we ever got that. Council members in the past have asked for a list of, uh, city vehicles. And, uh, you know, what, what we're responsible for, we, I don't think we've ever got, gotten that either. Um. As far as, you know, asset management, I mean, maintain and re- repair, uh, look at, inspect buildings. I mean, we have several service contracts that we pay for, for different things in the city. I mean, that, that, some of those things should be eliminated. I mean, we're paying service contracts for people to just wait for something to break. I think they should be taking care of these inspections. You know, I mean, we, we, we pay a lot for those service contracts. And, um, uh, now the city engineer, are, are you going to be the city engineer?
Ideally.
Okay, okay, that's good. Yeah, I agree, ideally. Um, and you're going to be a one man show? Are you, are you going to need to be hiring some, uh, some staff?
So, um, I'm doing exactly what I'm doing now. No, no, no staff. It's not intended to be a department. It's intended to be a position. So for, for projects handled the same way they're handled now. So they, I over, I provide oversight and I provide the link between the agencies and the designers and contractors. Same, as, same as it is today.
That, that was my question. I had a couple more comments, you know, for the, uh, director of asset management, maybe we can, uh, we can, uh, delegate our, our current, uh, D P W, our building maintenance, uh, facility managers and give them more responsibility for inspecting these things. Um, now, Mr. Mayor, this, uh, city engineer, do you expect any other hires to, 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 um, help him along in his job or is, is it definitely going to be just one person in the city engineer?
As, as, um, as Mr. Deep just mentioned, he's been doing it for almost three years by himself, so.
So it's just going to be definitely one person?
Just one person.
Thank you.
He's going to be full time.
I just have one last.
And, um, no, so there's not going to be a second, though, these three positions, there's going to be, uh, pensions involved in that. And we had a representative from the pension board here at our last meeting speaking on another issue where some additional pensions were, would be added. And he said that they cannot provide, the state law says that you, you can't affect the pension amounts coming in or paying out unless an actuary report is done for the pension board. And I was wondering, uh, where we stand on that. I mean, we, we definitely, I mean, I, I tried bringing some stuff before the council and in the past couple of things and I would say, hey, where's your actuary report? And when we bring something up, we always ask for, ask for actuary, we're asked for an actuary, but when someone else brings something up, we have to ask them to get it for us. And, uh, my last statement is, now, uh, we're going to have forty-five, fifty million dollars, you know, that we have to spend over the next three years or two years or whatever it is. Now, after that, we're not gonna have this money. And we're creating these new positions. I mean, if, a year ago, I was talking to the administration about giving some, some raises to, you know, one percent raise to some of our union members. And it was said, you know, we don't have, we don't have any extra money. And now we've got a lot of extra money. And I hope it's not, we have ARPA money, you can't count on that for anything. You gotta keep that completely out of the budget. There should be an asterisk in our budget, our, our general fund. It says, you know.
The ARPA money already spent.
Yeah, I mean, this is not, you know, eleven million dollars for, we just put eleven million in from, uh, what was it, the, uh, the pension? Or the, no, three forty-five, three forty-five. We put that into our, our general fund. And there should be asterisks around that. It's just that, you know, we have to have an actuary report on all these things. What, what's gonna, how it's gonna affect us two, three, four, five years down the line if we can afford this? I'm all for these positions. I mean, I mean, every one of these positions, I think, you know, most of them are a good idea. But, you know, let's be, uh, let's be responsible here and get the right data, like Councilman Ahmad said, Councilman Baydoun. Let's, let's get all that information before we act on these.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Next up is Councilman Oblahag, and then, uh, Councilman Vidun, and then we're gonna go to the audience.
The asset manager, is he going to be responsible for the money too in the treasury department? Because that is asset of the city.
There'll be facilities and anything that has to do with.
Physical.
Physical property, physical.
Okay, I recommend that will be very clear in the description. So nobody will misunderstand that that person will be responsible for managing the money or looking after the money or interfering with the treasurer department. Uh, I just want to say something. Uh, Waitrim, we supposed to hire engineer to help to save money. In twenty twenty-two, they spent, they charged us close to six hundred thousand dollars. This year, we are in the middle of the year, they charged us eight hundred thousand dollars. So we are basically spending two hundred thousand dollars more. And we don't know how much more by the end of the year. I would expect over a million and some. So where is the saving, Mr. Mayor, if we're going to bring city engineer and all these positions to us? If we still hire a company and we are paying them more this year, more than double than last year?
Council Chair?
Go ahead.
Right now, we have mandated by the state, Eagle, that we have to do CSO projects. So CSO projects, these are huge projects, you know, for the entire city, that we have to separate the water and sewer. So that's what Waitrim is working on right now, is the water sewer, that CSO program or CSO fund mandated by Eagle. So we still have a lot of, I mean, just to give you an example, we had, we had a plaza that was approved by the previous administration that to put, you know, I mean, I'll talk about it, you guys can FOIA it, on Ford Road. You know, they changed the zoning and this poor guy, he wanted to actually, he was, he was starting to build, Mr. Deep is the one that stopped him. Even though it was approved by the previous administration, there was nowhere to, to put the sewer. So Mr. Deep caught it and they put a halt on the program, the whole fricking project. Like, hey, wait a minute, where's the sewer supposed to go? If you put the sewer, you were gonna flood probably like three, four streets, both, uh, north and south of Ford Road. Because there was no place for the sewer to go. So that's the program, he worked on that. So he had to reroute the sewer to the backside of the property. So this is something that, you know, the previous, you know, that probably would have cost us millions of dollars by that contractor. But Mr. Deep was able to do that. And luckily, luckily that, uh, the builder or the investor was willing to cooperate and spend what, a couple hundred thousand dollars in addition to the project, so that he can make the city happy. It's like, you know, I don't wanna fight with the city. So, and again, there's a lot of other programs, there's just that, that we're paying for Waitrim that Mr. Deep is working on. Any company that comes in or any business or home that comes in, he's actually looking at that stuff. He's looking at the water sewer. Even Dua, Dua for the last, I don't know how many years, you know, we were part of Dua. Just the three years, three years, the last three years, we can't recover more than three years. The city overspent three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The taxpayers are paying for their water bill. How much?
Three sixty.
Three hundred, sorry, I apologize. Three hundred and sixty thousand dollars we were able to recover from Dua because we were just giving people money away without doing anything. Till Mr. Deep came in, it's like, wait a minute, we're overspending here. We're, we're paying, and nobody's gonna look and say, you're paying me extra. They're gonna take the check, they're gonna cash a check from the city. So that's what they were doing for the last, I don't know how many years, probably like fifteen, sixteen years. So imagine that, that and just the three years, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars that we paid. That's why we have a city engineer. That's why we had the previous entity is concentrating on CSO projects only.
So, Mayor, I was just, uh, can I, you know, follow up on you? How much the city paid to this project on Ford Road to connect to the sewer?
I don't have the data. I wish you would have.
Two hundred thousand dollars the taxpayers gave the developer to connect. He spent two hundred and we, taxpayers gave two hundred thousand. So that money we should have never paid because somebody bought a watermelon, it is bad or good. It's his property. It's not ours. We should have never paid two hundred thousand dollars out.
Council Chair.
Okay, Councilman Vidun?
Um, I'll, I'll keep it brief because I know I was a little emotional during my statements. I also, uh, want this community to know that openly and, and waverly, I support a community liaison. Uh, I think that the city, and I'm not speaking for a specific individual, I think when you walk into City Hall, I think tensions are high. I think we're lacking, uh, uh, customer service. And that don't mean because certain individuals like or don't dislike somebody. I just think that everybody's so busy and that, you know, when, you know, when John Doe walks through the door, we're not having that community liaison. Uh, so I think this position is detrimental to the city. I think it's needed. I don't mean detrimental in a bad way. So Roger, I know you're looking at me with your eyebrows up. Um, I mean, I mean, like, it's, it's, we're, it's detrimental because we don't have a liaison. Um, and I want you to know that most municipalities, and I think in the last ten years have adopted this. Some municipalities have five, six, seven, in different department liaisons. Uh, you know, you can, you know, different divisions of liaison, like there's this, there in the, in Dearborn, it's a south end liaison person. There's an east end liaison person. There's a west end liaison person. Dearborn Heights doesn't have any of that. Dearborn Heights has seven council members. And, and the, and the city, we're blessed to take on that role. But I think a community liaison is definitely, however, however, Roger, there still needs to be an actuary report. There still needs to be data here. There still you need to give, you can't just say, here's a description. We're gonna go out and put it out in the public and I need you all to approve this. It needs to be done the right way, guys.
Okay.
We, we, we wanna support this. Or we say we don't. Wanna make that clear. It just needs to be done through the right steps. That is all.
Okay. I'm allowed, Councilman, one last comment, and we're gonna go to audience questions.
On all of these positions, we have a status of full-time exempt, and in parentheses, salary. What does the exempt mean?
They're not, they don't get overtime.
Yeah.
Junior.
All right.
Senior. Professional.
And then the status, they are eligible for benefits, PTO and pensionable. What's PTO?
Eight time off.
Eight time.
Eight time, off, not overtime. And pensionable, they're entitled to a pension almost right off the bat?
After five years.
After five years.
There is a time? Okay, that was my other concern.
Okay. At this point, we're gonna go ahead and go to members in the audience. Ladies first, you know, I'm gonna go always ladies first, Ray.
Am I getting two minutes?
Thank you, Ray. She did.
Well. You look like a lady to me.
Well, thank you, Ray. Um, good evening, everyone. Sukaminsky, Ambrose Street.
All right, hold on one second, just to keep you on, on your tippy toe. This is two minutes. Usually we give three because it's a study session, we're gonna give two.
Okay. Um, infrastructure improvements cost a lot of money. As a previous school board member, I can tell you thirty-eight million can go very quick. It doesn't sound like this council or administration is gonna have a problem spending forty-five million because we know we need probably three times of that forty-five million of improvements. So that's just a comment. And it's things you won't see. It's no new rose bushes for in front of City Hall. That is strictly infrastructure. The other thing I wanted to say is I agree with council, some of your members, you need to have an actuary. You can't spend money unless you know what you have. End. That.
Thank you.
Former councilman, round of applause for that man. Yeah, don't raise your eyebrows. See, even the former councilman's sick of it.
No, he never did that to me. Uh, Ray Muscat, you are favored here. Ray Muscat, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County. Thank you, Council Chair, Mayor, City Clerk. How are you? Um, you know, we, we, we need to have a, a, a history lesson, especially when we got to these water meters. We spent, we bonded nine million dollars for water meters.
You did.
I personally wanted that water meters to be separated from the CSO fund of twenty million dollars. Whole thing came out to twenty-four and a half million dollars, I believe it was. Council did not go with the way I wanted it. They lumped it all together.
I did.
I didn't, I'm not mentioning who, who did or who didn't. But I can tell you, they didn't vote for it that way. And I know from previous years, okay, once you put money into a fund and call it something, they use it for whatever they want. Okay? And it all went away. Plus, we were told by the engineering company.
Sorry.
Engineering company that that was gonna be enough money, never taking into consideration the infrastructure of how they were gonna read the meters. That was gonna cost money. Ali Deep was a godsend to me. We spoke the same language, okay, engineering, all right? We were taken for a ride for many, many, many years on poor engineering, okay? I'm just telling you, we're gonna save so much money, it's not even funny on how things are gonna go. I could go on and on and give you guys history lessons on what was going on here. Look at, look at Wilson. How long did Wilson last? Okay? Charlesworth, another thing, just poured and it was all spalding. And my little bicycle rider there was the one that found it. And when we say building maintenance, it's not what you call really building maintenance, like you're gonna go out and repair a boiler or you're gonna repair this. They're gonna do odd jobs, but we need a facilities person that's gonna take care of this stuff. And that's where a facilities manager comes in. I've worked in facilities, so I know that. Thank you.
Former councilman, thank you.
Margaret King, Mayfair Street, Dearborn Heights. Um, I've been coming to these meetings for a year now. We know that. Um, and I've just been listening to everything that has been going on in the city that I reside in. Um, Eaton Center, I hold dear and close to my heart because my grandpa attends there and my adopted mom, um, has been attending there for years. I sat here on July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, Comptroller King, Cindy King was up here, and she said that it was taken out of budget. How are we gonna have, because the month, our budget was too tight. It was too tight. Now we're coming back with these three directors and we still don't have a director for the Eaton Center. That puts a bad taste in my mouth because our Eaton, our Eaton Center and our senior citizens should be top priority. They have been residing in the city for God knows how long and they still need the director. It puts a bad taste in my mouth. I get it that we need these three, but that's something that needs to be addressed because the budget was too tight.
Yeah, I know.
Here she goes. Might even give her an extra twenty seconds if she needs it.
Angela Banegas, Dwight Street. My biggest problem I have with all this is I look at all the job opportunities that we have online right now. If we wanna put all these new positions out there, what if we fulfill all of the positions that we have vacant right now? What are we gonna pay for this? And a lot of the positions that we have online, like paying seventeen dollars for someone to be a cadet, cadet at the jail is an insult. I just think that the money could be utilized more. And I think we could fulfill the positions that we have out there if we offered more money in our job opportunities. And I think that's more important to provide the basic services the city needs and for us to feel safe. We need our police. And our police doesn't even have what our salary is, what we play, pay a police officer. So who would even wanna apply at this point? That's all I have to say. I just think it'd be better spent somewhere else. Thanks.
Oh, no, here goes Vince. Might give you an extra five seconds.
Roger doesn't wink at you because you're ugly. Love you, Ray. Ben Strapkowski, Columbia Street. I would hope that the mayor would consider sitting down with his staff that he has now and interviewing the stat that we have at DPW, who are fairly well-educated, some of them, and consider them for these positions before he goes outside of the city. Promotion from within. It's not how the Marines do it. You know, you get better, uh, um, that work atmosphere and greater attitude from the people that you already have on staff when you see them promoting from within. So let's take a look at some of our staff, find out what their educations are, and take a look at them first. And as far as our assets and stuff like that goes, you know, part of our assets is the, uh, treasury department, property. All the, uh, properties that we're gaining along the E Course Creek. And our number one asset is Bourne Valley. So let's make sure that we're all managing that properly because we don't wanna lose it. Have a good holiday.
Thank you, holiday. Anybody else in the audience? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and go on Zoom. I see, uh, our treasurer, Lisa Exclayton. Please go ahead.
Two minutes?
Good evening. Um, bear with me, I had surgery this morning, so I don't sound real good.
Glad to hear that.
Can you hear me? Okay, sorry. I don't sound myself, so I do apologize. Um, but I wanted to call in after listening. Uh, first of all, I wanna remind council, you do not need a FOIA financial records from the city of Dearborn Heights.
Right.
You have access. Okay, second of all, um, you mentioned cash flow and of course, I'm doing recalculations. So you'll be getting that, that forecast again, projected. Okay, let's remember that word. Projected expenses and cash revenue through the end of the fiscal year, June thirtieth. You'll get that shortly. The other thing I wanna tell you regarding the three positions, it's already been said, you do need to know the impact on payroll and benefits. And by state law, which is Public Act three fourteen, you do need an actuary report. Because it will have long-term effects on your legacy costs, your pension system. And has the pension system even been contacted about this? Because last time, the last meeting, they had not been. Now regarding water, uh, Councilman Muscat, or, or, uh, retired Councilman Muscat, honorable, he is correct. The bond, the twenty-one bond of twenty-five million is now down to seven million. So paying for the meters is not a possibility, but I believe Mr. Deep is working on some grants for that and has mentioned that to you. I also wanna remind you, when you talk about water, that you currently have twelve million dollars invested. It was from water and another ten million in the two bank accounts. So therefore you have twenty-two million sitting. We call that idle money. And then I wanna talk about payroll briefly. So payroll, when I started as a treasurer in twenty-one, we, our average payroll was for at least two years, around a half a million to six hundred thousand.
Leave me thirty more seconds.
All right. Well, you might wanna know this, so I will wrap it up. So you've gone from a half a million to eight and a half, eight hundred fifty thousand, no, I'm sorry, misquoted. Five hundred thousand, a half a million, to eight hundred fifty thousand. That is what payroll has been. The last payroll was one million, the one before that was one point seven, and that's with payouts and clothing allowance, et cetera. So again, I just want you to be aware of where you're at right now and where are you going? Because, Council, for this area responsibility. Thank you.
Uh, Madam Treasurer, I have a question for you. Are you still there?
She is, she's just muted.
Madam Treasurer?
Okay. We'll come back to earlier meeting. Okay, thank you. Uh, anybody else on Zoom, Madam Clerk? I, I see a Sam. Sam, can you please go ahead and unmute? Hold on. City street name, please?
Hello?
Yes.
Sam, I was.
Okay, go ahead. Are you there? Are you cutting off?
Can you hear me?
Now we can. Now we can.
Okay, Sam Hodge, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, Wayne County.
Go ahead.
Jack was coming for Councilman, uh, Baydon.
Go ahead. You're cutting off badly. I, I can't hear anything. Are you there? Sam, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you a couple of seconds maybe to go to a different phone because nothing's coming through. Are you there last time? Okay, you wanna, is there anybody else on Zoom? I don't see nobody else, do you? Okay, anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? All right, let's just go to Sam one last time, give him an opportunity. Can you unmute him, please? Sam, can you hear us? One, once, twice? Okay, we'll take a five-minute break and then we'll start just before seven P M. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Chair.
Recording stopped.
I'm in a county meeting, what's up? Yeah. No, I have no idea. Okay, so it, it, it's, it spoke to the building.
Where's your tag?
My tag.
Your tag? A century of I have months.
Oh, I, I did for a little bit. I'm recovered and you got a point. I'm not gonna have shoulders. Probably could use it. Went to the doctor today. And I got two torn rotator cuff muscles. My leg from core, my bike was torn.
How could you do that?
I switched my tour because I had all four torn this one. And I switched teams. This one has two muscles, right? I mean, this side of the shoulder, the right side and the leg.
Where we gonna go? Because I missed it.
I love this man. I feel like Z H S, that's the place. No, this is not coming. Z H S, the pressure of the press. That's what, that's what, let it be public. I don't hide from it.
Happy Christmas. Yeah, there you go.
Hey Ray.
What the? I didn't write the paper. Do I raise up? No, it's up. What do you want?
Is that big enough for you?
Who gave us this?
I don't know.
Recording in progress.
Uncle Bob, how you doing? Good. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular meeting of Dearborn Heights City, regular special meeting of Dearborn Heights City Council. You're called for order right now at seven oh two P M. Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, please take your call.
Dave Abdallah.
Here.
Zuhair Abdahak.
Here.
Hassan Ahmad.
Here.
Moby Dun.
Here.
Nancy Breyer, here. Robert Coniston.
Here.
And Tom Wensel.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a call.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, much appreciated. Next up is our pledge of allegiance and if this is really my final meeting this time.
You'll do it.
Right here. Uh, I'd, I'd like to have the honor of all of my council members, including Councilman, Councilman, uh, Councilman Ray Muscat. All together, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And I see you are a Christian stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless you, sir.
Thank you.
It meant a lot to me to have all my fellow council members be with me on this one. That's why I wanted to call them. Thank you very much, council members, much appreciated. Next up on our agenda is agenda approval. Counsel Chair, I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agenda of the special meeting of December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three as your last meeting as submitted.
Second.
I was told last time. All right, motion made by Councilman Baydun, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion on that?
Counsel Chair.
Councilman?
Uh, I, I'd like to add the motion for the, for the legal fees. The corp council did finish it and send it to us, so if we can't add it today.
You're talking about in regards to adding a second, uh?
A special, special legal council, correct?
Okay, do you have it? I, I never received it either. Was that the one that was originally?
The one that was sent to you.
Okay, I don't, do, do you have a printout of it or?
I don't have a printout.
Okay, so this one's being added on to the agenda, but.
Let's sit down.
Two minutes. This one's being added to the agenda, so what we'll do is when it comes up, if you don't mind reading it off of, um, just, it's, it's short, just two sentences. Okay, no problem.
I support that.
All right, so motion, motion made by Councilman Ahmad to.
Counsel Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to request to add something to the agenda.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to add to the T, T, T P O M contract, uh, could talk about adding a signing bonus, which was discussed and we were misled to think that there was a signing bonus. I'd like that added to the agenda for discussion.
Second.
Okay, and I apologize, I had to check on something with the clerk. What was it that you were adding, Councilman?
I want to add, uh, well, I want to make a motion, uh, to add a discussion about adding a signist bonus to the T P O M contract, which council was led to believe uh, when approved the contract that there was a signing bonus involved.
I don't think you can add to a contract already negotiated.
Right.
And I would say that it's not proper, um, to bring it up at this point.
Counsel Chair, I'll, I'll change it then to, uh, adding above and beyond what they received in their contract, a signing bonus.
Okay, why don't we do that? Just so that this way, uh, legalese is acceptable to them and it's acceptable to yourself. Why don't we say a discussion?
Yeah, I did say.
And then we'll go from there.
Yeah, okay.
Because at that point, if we come out to an agreement that it is within the legalese of being able to be done, at that mo, at that point, you can make the motion and we can approve it or deny it.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Uh, Madam Clerk, for this particular one and for Council, Councilman Ahmad is obviously from, um, city officials. We could have, we could add it there. So it'd be B, nine B. And for the one from Councilman Tom Wensel, the discussion, would that be in the same spot, nine C? You want it there? Okay. All right, so motion made by Councilman Baydun, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Uh, now, Councilman Baydun, you'll have to amend your motion to add the two.
To add.
Addition.
Nine C.
Nine B and C.
Nine B and C.
As per the two council members, um, Ahmad and Wensel.
I concur.
Um.
I concur.
Okay, so Councilman Breyer seconds that. All favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on our agenda is public hearings and comment on agenda items only. So at this particular point, anybody in the audience that would like to come up, you'll have two minutes. Please state your name, city and street on an agenda item only, please. And just for those on Zoom, uh, whoever Sam was, if you'd like to still speak, uh, we'll allow you to speak during the Zoom part of this. Go ahead, city, street name, please.
Sue Kaminsky, Amboy, Dearborn Heights. Um, I just wanted to concur with counsel on the proposal of hiring counsel for the city council to have. I think it's a good idea. Um, just like be called Blue Cross and ask a question, you can talk to ten people, get ten different answers. And I think having at least two credible, um, answers is something that's been long overdue. Thank you.
Okay. I get Nancy.
Ray Muscat, Havlock Street. I'd like to speak about the facilities management, a job that's going to be, uh, voted on today.
Bud?
Um, you know, facilities management is a very, very key component in any business or places where you have property and or equipment, okay? And let's just take, for instance, we'll go back to the, to the time where our, our power failure to our generator went out. We had service contracts and you all know I voiced my opinion against service contracts because they didn't give us anything. Okay, when we needed our generator more than ever, it failed us. It failed us. That's where a facilities manager comes into play, okay? I've always talked, you've heard me talk about predictive maintenance. Forget about preventative, which is good. But predictive is be able to say, your roof is going to be dead in five years. You better start putting money toward it, okay? Your generator needs to be rebuilt in the next three years. Put money toward, that's what a facilities manager does. He does all that predictive stuff. I thought we got three minutes.
Two minutes.
I thought this is a regular meeting.
This is, you're speaking not during, uh, public time, public time.
Sorry, yeah. Eight minutes for Donald Dray, day, you're in Donald Dray now?
I was saying to myself, boy, it's going by real quick here, you know, but please.
I paused it for you, by the way.
Facilities person and engineer are so important. They're going to save you money. They're going to br, you know, they, they're not going to bring money in, but the money that they save is going to be money that you don't have to spend in the long run. So please, think about this. Think about the things I've said about this stuff over the last fifteen years. I've said this, I've gone on about this for fifteen years about facilities, predictive maintenance, because we have none. Okay, when we have water valves that have been broken for two years at the Eaton Center that control the flushing of the toilets, that's ridiculous, okay? Uh, so please, consider at least those two positions. I, I beg you, okay? It's going to save you money.
Now, Councilman, I have a question for you. You had mentioned.
Former Councilman.
Former Councilman. You had mentioned that you decided to take some time off because you want to spend time at home. It looks like your wife sent you right back out.
A-actually it was, it, my wife was, uh, in, in a different city, uh, taking care of our little one-year-old grandson. And I got hijacked by my next-door neighbor and threatened me that he was going to move, move away if I didn't come with him tonight, so.
All right.
I, I can't afford to lose him, okay? Because, uh, my house is probably worth a hundred thousand dollars more living next to Sam Miller.
As a real, as a real, try to debate that, but we'll, we'll talk about that as a different title.
Trust me, it's worth it. You better do your homework.
All right, next up, anybody, anybody else in the audience that has a comment on an agenda item only?
Counsel Chair.
You got one on Zoom. Just one second, Councilman. Okay, is that, if it's on an agenda item, only if you want to speak as a resident. Not, then let's wait until that comes up.
I'll speak as a resident. I just want those positions approved, they will be approved by the city council.
Which, what do you mean?
That we are directors, which, you know, they want to, I like that city council to have a say in it.
Yeah, they have to be. Oh, you're talking about the specific people, not the positions.
Those are the people themselves.
Specific people, right.
People are going to be at will, Counsel Chair. As much as we want to do it, the mayor has that discretion.
Okay, anybody else in the audience? Seeing none? We'll go ahead and go to Zoom. We have iPhone four. Can you please unmute him, Madam Clerk? You have two minutes, city, street name, please.
Thank you so much, Counsel Chair. Sam Hodge, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, Wayne County again.
Okay, go ahead. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, I was seeing some comment earlier to Councilman Bedun. Uh, I'm not sure if you heard it or not, so.
We didn't.
No, we did not.
We didn't.
Okay. I think a lot, Councilman Bedun, you can never get his respect. You could earn respect, but you'll never get respect. And with all respect to you guys, the way these meetings been ran, that been brought up, I'm sorry to say it, but you guys will never be respected. And nobody's gonna pay your respect or give you respect for the way you guys been, been act. And I hope you understand where I'm coming from. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you for the compliment.
Council Chair. I am gonna respond to Mister Sam Haj and I want him to know that I'm sorry he feels he can't respect me, uh, but I'm still gonna continue to respect him and anybody because, you know, I, I, I kill people with kindness. That's the kind of person that I am. My parents raised me to be a great person. Well, my question wasn't, I'm gonna continue to disrespect people because I don't disrespect people. So Mister Sam Haj, Mister, never understood what I was saying. My question to the mayor, Mister Sam Haj, was, while these dis, while these directors continue to feel like they can disrespect this council, what per, what measures are you gonna take to prevent these things from happening? That was my question, Mister Sam Haj. I'm sorry you failed to understand that. That was my question. I don't disrespect people. Um, I, I like to believe that I was well-raised and that's not who I am as a person. Thank you, Council Chair.
Okay. Anybody else on Zoom? Seeing none, let's go ahead and move on. Next up on our agenda is item eight A, new full-time positions.
Council Chair.
Councilman?
Moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorized the necessary budget amendments to create the following three positions. City Engineer, Director of Asset Management, and Director of Community Relations, Ombudsman, as outlined in eight A.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Coniston, seconded by. Okay. I will repeat again, motion made by Councilman Coniston, seconded by.
I'll second it for discussion purposes.
Okay, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. And we're gonna go ahead and open it for discussion, but I do wanna point out to those in the audience, maybe they just came in or maybe on Zoom new, uh, new on Zoom right now. Uh, we did have a study session and it was an hour and forty-five minutes and it was all on this particular subject, so. The only reason I'm saying that is when and if the vote takes place, which obviously will take place, I just wanna make it clear that we did discuss this. I don't want, want them to think that we just rushed something through. Uh, at this point, I'll go ahead and open it to any discussion.
Council Chair.
Councilman?
I would like to put a motion to table this, uh, motion till further notice, until we get more information like I discussed. And we got actual financial report to see exactly where the money is coming from.
Second. Okay. Uh, you're making the motion, but the motion was made originally by Councilman Coniston.
Yeah, Council.
But let's go ahead and discuss that further and then Councilman can see if he's gonna amend his motion.
Council Chair. Go ahead. But. Um, three things. Number one, I believe these are time-sensitive and they have to be done this year. That was the purpose of the meeting. Number two, um, how many of you remember the ice arena? Um, nobody, i- i- there was a time when the ice arena was condemned. Uh, nobody was falling for the ice arena and sever all their assets. Uh, how much rent was owed, whether rent was being paid or not being paid. Um, I think these are, these are, uh, needed positions. Um, and especially the Director of Community Relations, um, and especially the City Engineer. Uh, you know, if, if we wanna get something done for a resident, um, that would be a great assistance and it would be a great assistance for, uh, someone to answer questions. I don't know. I'm a little older than most of you here. Um, I was talking to Councilman Zuhair Abdalhak about Joe Bedun. And what a great, uh, assistant he was to Mayor Guido. So, um, what, what, wh- what is it that is, uh, if anything, is time-sensitive about doing these budget amendments this year?
Council Chair.
Go ahead.
Yeah, obviously, we had it on agenda the last meeting and you guys tabled it. You wanted more information and we provided all the information you guys requested. And also, I mean, don't forget about the golf course. The golf course, when we took it over, the condition that it was in and nobody was looking at it with what we had.
Huge.
Huge, hundreds and thousands of dollars that was lost to the city, you know, when we first took it over, with the condition that it was in, because nobody was looking at it. So, again, you know, these positions are required, especially with the facilities. And again, we got a lot of work to, we got a lot of work to do. And, you know, with the ten million dollars that the fire station's gonna get, you know, uh, you know, I, I'm just not sure who's gonna, we still, the, the current staff that we have, we're doing the work. But we're just, the extra work that we have to do with the money that we, we receive, we still need staff to maintain the money that we have to spend and the things that we need to spend it on. So my staff is already working, trying to maintain the city, trying to service the city with what we have. But we have additional, as mentioned, close to forty-five million dollars that we need to spend and we need somebody to overlook at these things. And at the same time, you know, li- like I mentioned before, you know, this has never been done before and we've never received that much money. And I can tell you, I've talked to several people in, on federal and state level, nobody's applied for anything. And right now, you know, somebody mentioned, you know, what happens if we, we don't get the money, you know, if we, this is not, okay, we got the money, I'm, I'm done, okay, I'm gonna retire, I'm not gonna ask for more money. We're continuously asking for more money. We have close to two million dollars right now. In addition, is in a queue for us to get, you know, pending, they approved the budget. And also, there's money, there's, there's a lot of money out there. We just need to get it. So this is not, okay, this is it, we're done with this. There's still a lot of money that we need to get. You know, we have a vision to move our city, propel, propel our city forward. This city's been stagnant for not, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty, is it sixty years? Nothing, I mean, there's, there's nothing, there's no rec center for this city. There's nothing, the city, there's parks, the parks are outdated. You know, Richard A. Young building. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's sad to see it in the condition that it's in. There's a lot of things that we need to do. So by you guys, again, I had respect, you know, I, I gave you everything that you needed. We, we do need to push this and I already discussed that, you know, this money's gonna come out of the general fund. We're already saving a lot of money into things that we don't have to spend anymore, you know, stuff that we already got grant money for. So by not approving this, you guys are really hurting the residents, you know? And I just hope, you know, that you guys pass this. Again, it, we do have a lot of work to be done. And I just don't wanna go out there and contract the work to another company, you know, or, you know, send it out. And, uh, Councilman retired Muscat said, said it best, this has been going on for years. There's a lot of service contracts out, you know, for stuff that people are supposed to be doing this work. So why not bring it in-house? And that's what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to bring everything in-house. And I brought in-house the engineering service and I need to get in-house, you know, the service contracts, people to actually look at these things. Again, I'm doing exactly what I've been hearing for the last, you know, few years, even when I was on council, I've been hearing the same thing. And I'm doing exactly what the council wants.
Okay, Councilwoman Breyer, you had a question?
I have three points. First of all, can we separate those three positions?
Technically, yeah, we can do whatever we want.
Alright, I, I'd like to, uh, only go with one position at that this time and that would be engineering. I think the next council should decide this final issue, whether we want the other two positions. And I also wanna know if there's a time limit on that money availability. And third, I understand that we've gone out and posted for our director at the South End, Josie, and I'd like to see that happen first. That's all I have to say.
Mary, wanna answer on those questions?
We put that on for, for a reason. We, we need all three positions. And, you know, again, you know, this is, this is some of the things that you guys have been asking for, for the last three years, I've been in this position. You know, I'd like, I'd like to get, with your permission, to get that approved. And we already posted for the Eaton Center and we, we did share that.
How long will that take to confirm whether we have her or not?
Well, she has to apply. I haven't seen that she applies. Okay, so I have to go back and see what, how long has it been posted? For how long?
It should have been posted earlier this month. It was not. We waited eight months.
No, I understand, but what I'm saying is, I don't know if it's posted one week, two weeks, so I have to wait till the post.
About a week or less.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilman Abdalhak?
No. Really, Mayor, you make me so happy when I hear about all these millions we're talking about, but I haven't seen anything in the Treasury Department. Uh, we have to be very careful what we spend, what we do. My information from the Treasury Department that by June thirtieth, we will not be in, uh, in line.
Right.
Was the Treasury Department, which we promised that we will have four million dollars in rainy fund on the side. The money is not available from the numbers, I see. That's why I want an actuary report. I want to know exactly how much it's going to cost the city. And my question, is Mister Alidib going to do the drawing? The actual drawing for the fire station? Is he going to be assisting in drawing since he is a civil engineer, I believe, uh, right, Mister Deep? Is he going to be the drawing to save us money or we going to, as usual, give it to weight trim, somebody outside? So I don't see, you know, any information which tell me that I'm going to be saving hundreds of millions of dollars. If you can, in the future, near the future, explain this to us, I will be more than happy if I'm still around. Uh, you know, to approve these, uh, positions. But at this time, I will ask my colleagues to table this one until you have the full information. And until we know that we are in compliance with the charter, that is my main issue. Is that, are we going to be in violation of the charter or not? And that's why we should have our, uh, attorney, so we can have a second opinion and we can be on the safe side. Thank you.
Okay.
Council Chair, again, we're not creating departments, just cre, there's positions. It's not departments as the charter says.
Any other council, council?
Council Chair, uh, with all due respect to Honorable Councilman Coniston and the mayor, I mean, I don't know what's a rush, where are we, time-sensitive? I mean, like he said, the money is not here. It's gonna take, take some time for the money to come in. I know we keep mentioning the fire department. I don't know, when are we gonna start the fire department? And I do agree with Councilman Abdalha. I do think we need to approve that budget for the special legal council before we move forward. And we can take it from there. Thank you, Council Chair.
Okay. Any other comments?
Council Chair.
Councilman?
I myself would like to see this, uh, ultimately pass. I do, I would like to see this pass, but I, I think all the right, proper information needs to be given to the council. This isn't ultimately saying, uh, that this is something that we don't need. Clearly, you hear the former councilman, uh, Muscat saying that this is something we've talked about, the mayor talking about, um, you know, Warren Valley Golf Course, and I believe it was our honorable Coniston, Councilman Coniston, talking about, uh, Canfield. These are, you know, these are great testaments. That's why it's important to have this position. Uh, but I, you know, we shouldn't shy away from being able to say, give the information, put all the facts in front of us and, and, you know, gladly, we would wanna save more money and help move the city forward. Uh, but, and we, we appreciate the administration because I know the mayor said that they're, you know, they're consulting the council, so I, I appreciate that, but, uh, you know, the council is the fiduciary for the city. Um, so, so before doing any of this, uh, I think I have to also agree with our Councilwoman on Josie. This is something we've asked for a position for a very long time. And if that's okay with you, Councilman, uh, I was asked by a resident to read something, we're gonna, or I can do it there in public comments, whichever you prefer.
If you're speaking on behalf of yourself, you can, but on behalf of the resident.
It would be on behalf of a resident. And, and then one of the things was, you know, in the past, we were able to hire positions, take them from part-time to full-time without having to go through all the other obstacles. It seems like, and I'm not, I'm not saying the mayor's doing that or the HR's doing that. This individual is saying, in the past, we've been able to go through it. Uh, I don't know the facts to it, uh, but I, I, I don't wanna see any hula hoop over here happening because we're trying to bring on Josie. We've been asking for, for the last eight, nine months. Yet we're this one, we're so quick to say, here, just, just approve these three positions. Um, you know, we wanna work with this administration, but this administration has to work with us as well.
Okay.
Council, uh, Council Chairman, may I add, um, uh, I would disagree, uh, obviously with Councilman, um, Abdalhak about violating the charter because of the department, um, it doesn't, not departments, directors, and one is doing the same job. But can we have this council just articulate what specifically more they are looking for? So we can have a, a, a game plan, how to address it and make sure we fulfill it, if that's the question. I, I've heard different things. I've heard Josie, I've heard, I haven't had a specific, you need an actuarial chart on this? Is that what you're saying? What exactly do you need?
All of it, yeah, an actuary as well.
Well, there's a lot of information given, but you haven't articulated and why. It'll help you make your decision. Fine, just tell us what.
Council Chair, Council Chair. Yeah.
Councilwoman?
Uh, thank you, Corp Counsel. Like I ma, I mentioned before, I do need data. I mean, according to the chart that was given to us, it shows like it's a new department. We have three new departments. I mean, that's what the chart says. I mean, the chart that was provided to us.
Or chart.
So I guess that needs to be worked out to see exactly those position under what department they work out. I mean, accord, if I'm looking at this chart, it shows that's a, it's a totally new department, three, two new departments. And I did confirm with, uh, our engineers said it's an engineering department by itself, which is fine, but the other two shows departments by itself too. Uh, really.
Doing the same work he's doing.
No, no, I understand, I understand, but you just said.
Department, because he didn't say there's any employees or assistants.
But, but still, it's gonna be its own, whether it's one employee or ten, it's gonna be its own department.
Oh, pressure card, let me, let me.
Yeah, I'm not trying to debate, but, so this one, second, I do need, I wanna know exactly what does the city own? I need every single commercial building, every single residential law or property, any asset that the city owns. I need to know about it, to know exactly if I do need an asset manager or not. And the third, uh, yeah, I do need financial report to show exactly where the money is coming from. Are we gonna be okay to pay those people, like three months down the road, six months down the road? Because, I mean, been hearing different stuff. So once this is provided for me, I, I can make a better decision. Thank you, Council Chair.
Okay.
Can we put it on record or can we, uh, like put it in a request or some, I'm, I'm not sure.
Well, he, he's, what he, what.
Well, he just asked for.
I know, so I'm, I'm gonna allow him to speak because he was speaking earlier, but he just wants specifically what things you want.
This is, I don't know.
He's asking the why. Now, the why, with due respect, we don't have to provide the why. We could just say this is what we want to make a decision. That's at your discretion.
Well, he answered himself.
But if I can, the why, it's up to you.
I mean, you know, I know why.
You're, Council Chair.
Exactly what you need, so, so it can be met. And it can be met at a time, you know. It can be met and it can be met in a timely fashion. Because I, I, I think the, the, the goals, what has, like, assets. I mean, I haven't seen anyone prior to this year itemize all the assets that we have, what we own, you know? And I think it's a good, it's a good question. Um, it just hasn't been done before. So you're, you're both on, administration and council are on track to come up with an incredible solution with these three positions and, and really move us forward. Uh, but just help give some articulable issues you're looking for, so we can check and make sure it's done.
Thank you, Corp Counsel.
Okay, Councilman, uh, Wensel, go ahead.
Thank you, Council Chair. With the, the, our treasurer has been asking for this for about a year, uh, these assets that we have. Um, and, uh, to answer your question about the, uh, actuary, uh, our former treasury, treasurer John Riley, uh, and the current, uh, member on the pension commission stated that anytime you have, uh, created position that affects the pension or increases the amount of pensions given out, there, there has to be an actuary report by the state of Michigan. It's a law. He said it right there on the podium. Um, now, what I wanted to say about the director, um, the administration just said that, you know, the, the, getting these three positions, which, you know, I, I'm not disagreement with them at all, but, but getting these three positions, um, are providing the council with what they've been asking for indirectly. So he's, you, he's, they're, they're, they're giving us what we've been asking for. But before we consider these three positions, give us what we've been asking for, for at least a year with the, uh, coordinator at Eaton Center. And, uh, give us our, 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 our separate council that we've been asking for. And then, then we can consider these other positions, but let's go in order. If we're getting what we've been asking for, this, let's cross some stuff off the list that we've been asking for for a while. Thank you.
Okay. Couple, couple things, um, I wanna address. First of all, in terms of Josie, as you know, we voted as a democracy and I spoke with Councilman Bedun about that. Um, I don't know her personally. Uh, but I do know as a democracy, as a council body, we asked administration to go ahead and hire her on a full-time basis, so I'm all in favor of that. On the other hand, though, however, I don't think it's a good idea for us as a council body to say, well, we'll hire X if you do what we asked you for. I, I, I just find it kinda wrong to tie the two together and, and put one with the other as a hostage. It, it's just my personal opinion on that. So. So again, we all voted in favor of hiring Josie on a full-time basis and I'm okay with it. But let's look at this particular three positions separately. Second thing, when I spoke with Mr. Alideeb, he informed me that a lot of cell towers that are in the city of Dearborn Heights are not paid for, you know, as far as rental, what have you is concerned. He didn't even have any assessment, and I don't mean it as a detriment to you, like you did something wrong. He's obviously new to the city. But there was no records of what we were getting paid from these different cell tower companies. And as some of you know, that's a lot of money. So I don't know if they are, they're not paying us, how much they're paying us, we don't know. Just one, one quick second. So me personally, as a businessman, I'm always for hiring additional service providers. In my business, I have more employees than what's normal in my business. Okay? I carried nine. I'm a Realtor. I've got nine employees. That's because I'm a believer in providing great customer service by having additional people to provide those services. And then when you look at these three positions, you take a look at the first one. I asked, uh, God rest his soul, uh, former Mayor Pulepco, I asked him at time, I said, this ombudsman, how come we don't have an ombudsman? And honestly, maybe I'm getting older. I can't remember what he told me. But I believe that position is a very important position because what happens a lot of times is a resident comes into City Hall, they need something. They can't get it. Why is that? Because if they go to just the director, that director is busy doing what they are doing. They may not be able to do it. They go to a mayor and I said, a mayor, I'm not talking about this specific mayor, any mayor. They're busy doing what they're doing. They can't do whatever. Then what ends up happening a lot of times, they call the council members. Well, the council members are part-time. They try to do whatever they need to, but again, they're also limited in time. So what happens a lot of times, it goes away. So this particular person, whoever it happens to be, will be able to work in between. So where a resident will come in, City Hall, say they've got a problem with tree XYZ and they got nowhere with us. This person can take it over and be the goal between the administration and that particular resident to be able to get this thing done. In addition, of course, as council members, they take the asset management. We do have a DPW. We do have a building maintenance department, but that's not what they specifically do. You take a look at, for example, what Councilman Constant just mentioned. We all know there was a problem at Warren Valley Golf Course. That place was unfortunately, and I take as much ownership of it as maybe any of us can. We didn't know what was going on over there. We didn't know the condition it was in. We didn't know anything about it. And suddenly, the gentleman left and we're like, holy cow. Look at the problem that we've got here, where an asset management could possibly have taken care of that. In addition to that, I have a quick question.
Ice Arena, yes. Question, can this asset manager right now walk into Warren Valley and say, I want to take a look at this building? Because I'm gonna tell you right now, on the Warren Valley Golf Course contract, they're not gonna be able to, they're at least.
Well, what I'm talking about, so, no, 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 we still have, just like in any contract.
Blow that out of the water.
Well, no, 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 just like in any contract, when you have a lease, even on a house, as a landlord, you have a right to come in there with notice and check the property out. I don't know that, I don't have the contract directly in front of me. I'm showing you examples. The Ice Arena, if you remember, before it was rebuilt, was condemned.
Mm-hmm.
It was condemned because nobody knew what was going on in there. And yes, administration, not this one, the previous one, has to take ownership of that. But had we had somebody overseeing that, maybe that wouldn't have happened. So again, it, that's why I asked earlier, is it gonna be a profit center or is it gonna be savings? It sounds like it's gonna be more savings than anything. And lastly, these positions can still be voted on if you believe in them. I believe in them personally. I think I think they're great uh to bring in good customer service to our uh city. We can still make it conditional upon being compliant with the charter and conditional upon an actuary report that is favorable to this council body. If those are the two concerns that you've got, excluding Councilman Ahmad's concern.
Counselor Chair, but I do respect your opinion. I'm I'm with you. I think we do need those positions, but I I do still need, we need more information. And to be honest, I think we failed to even to discuss the salaries. I mean, looking at those salaries, I mean, I think beside the engineer, I mean, they're more than any director in the city. And I don't, I I'm, I just, I I guess I need more explanation. I mean, why we're paying that much money? More than any director in the city. Plus, one of the position I did check in different cities, I don't think they even they get paid that much and they're bigger cities. So like I said, I mean, I don't want this to fail, Counsel Chair. I wanted to go forward, but I think we, give us some more information till we can make the proper decision on behalf of the residents. So let's just table it for now and, you know, let's get those information and we'll take it from there.
The the only thing I would rebuttal with there, out of, out of fairness, they did ask multiple times, what information do we need so that they could provide it?
Well, Counsel Chair, we just had the study session today because we had no clue what kind of position are these on the description. So now we're like, we know what they ask for.
To you, Alideeb. And Counsel Mad.
Okay, Councilman.
Okay, we don't, we don't need to sit for six hours like last time. It's simple and easy. We need a second opinion from a lawyer to tell us that we are not in violation of the charter or any laws. And we need actuary report. And we need to hear from the treasurer, really, if we have enough money, if we can withstand those salaries. Those are very high beside the engineering. Uh, those are very high salaries. We can hire people for a lot less than that and with degrees with everything. So I suggest we go and we take a vote on the motion made by Mr. Constant and see where we go from there.
Okay, but to make it clear, the vote was not tabled, it was to vote on this.
No, no, no. He made the motion basically to pass it. And um Mrs. Brier, she seconded, let's vote on it if it passes or it fails.
Okay.
And the only caveat is, uh, we don't need in a, I read the charter provision. We would have to also approve those positions, the council would.
You're talking about what to hire specific people?
Instead of, instead of not necessarily to hire specific people, but to go out and pay a lawyer, you know, the charge is forty grand or whatever to.
Okay. So motion made by Councilman Constant, seconded by Councilwoman Brier uh for the new full-time positions. On favor, please state aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No, no.
Okay, ma'am clerk.
Robert Canston, Robert Canston.
Yes.
Do hair, Abdallah.
No.
Tom Wenzel?
No.
Dave Abdullah?
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad?
No.
Nancy Brier?
No.
Mo Bedun?
My vote doesn't count, but no.
Yes, yes it does. A motion fails.
Okay.
Two to five.
Okay, motion fails. Next item on our agenda and and for council members and administration. If there's something, if the corporation council asks for, if there's something specific you need, email it to either the mayor or just CC the corporation council on there and then we can go from there. Uh, next up is item eight B, deputy controller position salary increase.
Counsel Chair.
Go ahead.
Councilman Abdul Ha.
That the Dearborn Heights City Council authorized the following budget amendment to increase the deputy controller's salary for the purpose of filing the deputy controller position that has been vacant as outlined in eight B.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Abdul Ha and seconded by Councilman Bedun. Any discussion on that?
Counsel Chair.
Councilman.
The reason I am for this because we hired before controller who had no knowledge whatsoever about being a controller. Except, and I'm going to be blunt, he was a friend to a friend in the city. I'm not going to say more than that. That cost the residents seven hundred thousand dollars after he left. Because the books were so screwed up and we still paying one point two million dollars to plant Moran to fix those books. So the taxpayers have spent close to one point nine million dollars for a decision made to hire the wrong person. And I would love to see somebody who has a degree, who's qualified. And if we can, you know, hire the best people for that department specifically, I am for it. No matter what's the ceiling for, if it is ninety thousand or a hundred or a hundred twenty thousand, I don't want to exceed your salary. So please, I urge you to approve this because it is really very necessary.
Okay, I'd just like to make a quick comment. Uh, just, I I just want all of you guys to keep in mind, this is just, this is a position that has already been posted. It is a previous position that had already been there. So we're not coming up with a new position. The only thing is, with the post, with the previous amount of dollars being paid to that particular position, it didn't attract any
Anyone.
anybody to bite on it. And we're just suggesting to raise the proposal by thirty-three thousand dollars to be able to attract, I I'd like to say better candidates, but in this case, just candidates.
Qualified.
Qualified candidate.
Councilman, the base salary, I believe the mayor asking ninety thousand, mayor? Ninety thousand? Okay.
Okay, Councilman Bedun.
Yeah, that's ninety-five thousand, Councilman. Um, and I'm for that, Council Chair. I just want to also ensure that with this description, maybe we can ask the HR director to specify that they have a CPA. Uh, and so aside from having a degree, they are CPA licensed. They're not just a.
Not gonna get a.
You know, or I'm sorry CPA certificate, but it's not just, oh, I'm an accountant. No, no, we want you to be a CPA. Um, I think that would, you know, it 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 would go a long way as well. I think that's something that's very, very important.
You could ask for a master's degree, but I don't know that you say you have to have a CPA.
We're asking for accounting and also experience.
Yeah, but it would, in um job descriptions and accounting, finance, business management or related degree? Okay.
Counselor Chair, I'm all in favor of this motion because you know what? I don't want Plan Moran anymore. Once this person is hired, I'm not, this is in record, I'm not approving anything from Plan Moran anymore. Because I mean, all the money been spending, I mean, whether just have more employees in the city, qualified employees, and we're good to go. Thank you, Counsel Chair.
Counsel Chair.
Councilman.
Uh, I I hate to see Cindy that somebody, a man who's higher salary than yours. I would recommend that if we bring somebody who's uh higher than her salary, that we adjust her salary to be above him since she is the director. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Abdul Ha, Councilman, the ninety-five would not be higher than her salary.
Yeah. Okay, any other discussions on this? Okay, motion made by Councilman Abdul Ha, seconded by Councilman Bedun. On favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried.
Counsel Chair.
Councilman.
Um, a couple of things. On, we we passed eight A, I mean, we turned down eight A. And I think we should uh make a motion, take that to a study session, discuss that.
So at this particular point, because it was turned down, and that's why I asked council members, they could email the corporation council and the mayor as far as what they need further. And then whoever is the next council chair, they could go ahead and add on the agenda again if they so choose.
Okay.
Just because something's turned down, it's it's not over. And just because something is approved, doesn't mean forever either. So either way, it's fluid. It could be added, expected, either way in the future.
Alright, thank you, thank you.
Um, next item on our agenda is item nine A, this is on cell phones for city council.
Counsel Chair.
Councilman.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council expand the use of city-issued cell phones and issue to seven city council members through the city's current approved vendor, AT&amp;T and FirstNet Primary. And for IT Director Cooper to facilitate this request. In addition, authorize the mayor and controller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants. And the treasurer to issue payments for the cost of the service out of the account number one oh one two hundred eight five three zero 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 and and a one-time payment for the equipment out of account number one oh one two five eight nine eight one zero 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 as outlined in nine dash eight.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Abdul Ha. Any discussion on that, Councilman?
Counsel Chair, I just wanted to warn the city council members, those phones, they will be subject to FOIA. So you guys have to be very careful. If you are going to discuss anything or text anybody, anybody can FOIA your records. So my recommendation, use your own phone so you are on the safe side.
But they can, uh, if I'm not mistaken, Corp, please correct me if I'm wrong. They still, if if you're using your own personal phone, they can still FOIA it.
No.
Yes. Yes, they can, yes, they can.
Yes, they can.
Yes, they can.
Those are your personal phones.
It does not matter if you're discussing city business on your personal phone, they can still FOIA.
Still FOIA.
They can, yes.
Okay.
Sorry, Counsel Chair.
Okay, Councilman.
I I do want to thank the clerk for bringing this forward. This is something actually we do need, like I said. I mean, using our personal phone for city business, I don't think it's a good thing. Uh, just for, to protect our own, actually, personal information. So I want to thank you for bringing this forward. Thank you very much.
Um, on my end, um, a couple of things. Is there a minute limit? I mean, how does this work with the city phones? We've never had city phones.
Things are limited now.
No, I know, I'm I'm just trying to make sure. Is there a minute limit? Is there, is it type of phone, et cetera, et cetera? I mean, okay.
I would think that it would be unlimited because I think all plans are unlimited now, but.
Myself, personally.
We could.
Data.
As you're unlimited, yours unlimited?
I think so.
My side personally, because it's a part-time position that we've got, and I do know that we, yes, we do get a lot of calls and make a lot of calls. But if you already have unlimited on your own phone, the only thing personally for something like this would be okay with me for was because of FOIA request, because if somebody FOIA and then you have your personal information on your own phone, whether bank records, pictures, whatever it is, uh, videos, whatever it happens to be, technically, people have access to that.
Videos you got.
And my biggest concerns with Councilman Bedun.
Bedun.
That's honestly, I I I find that it's an invasion of, I've got nothing on there that's, you know, other than lie Detroit lines videos. I've got nothing to be afraid of, but it's, it's, it's also, no matter what's on there, it's an invasion of privacy. So even if I had texted my wife, I love you, texted me, I hate you, I think it's an invasion of privacy for anybody or any governmental entity to be able to view that. Without the FOIA, I would vote no against this, but with the FOIA, I'm more comfortable with it.
Well, I want you to know, you know, legally speaking, I know Sir Roger's gonna say, I wish you went to law school. Legally, however you feel, the government does not care because once you sign up to be the selected official, you've allowed everything to be FOIA, including your tax returns, your bank accounts, whatever it is. You are no different than Donald Trump.
I would guess.
Definitely.
I would, I don't want to debate this, I would guess not.
That's funny.
It's a cellphone that I don't use for any city business. I don't believe they'd have a right to FOIA, but that's me.
Counsel Chair.
Councilman.
I don't see what the difference would be if we got, if we got uh city phones. What would stop them from FOIA in our personal phones anyway?
Because you don't talk city business on your personal.
How do you know? How do you know? Until you FOIA it. Why, why can they FOIA it now?
Because you swore an oath.
How do you know? I I never talk on city business on my phone. Never. See, I said that.
Counsel Chair.
You know, what's gonna stop them from FOIA, spoiling our personal lines?
Council, do you have an essential legal opinion on that?
Yes, they can FOIA both. If you're using your personal phone for um city business.
No, I'm not.
They can FOIA it.
They'll FOIA it anyway then, regardless of what I say.
Well, what's to say you're not using it?
That's what, that's my point.
Well, the FOIA will determine it.
So no, the point he's making is they can FOIA it no matter what. Is that correct?
They can FOIA, but you have a right to defend, or you can challenge to FOIA. If you say that how it's not city business, then you, then you would have to, you know, raise that issue.
Right.
And have them take it to a court to figure out what's private, what's.
Okay.
An independent judge would look at it and determine.
Okay.
Wait, all right.
Women Brier was.
Yeah, my, my question is, how much will this cost?
Uh, this is, I think we checked with the IT, uh, basically just like monthly, they're not even, they don't even pay for the phones, just a monthly fee for um I think like seventeen hundred, seventeen hundred a year. Yeah, it's not much.
A year?
Yeah.
Seventeen hundred a year for all the council members?
Sign me up.
I mean, Counsel Chair, if you don't mind, I mean, I mean, obviously, your cellphone is not out, our cellphone is out. I mean, I just hate answering people with like my business, like the way I answer for my business and they're actually calling as residents. I would love to, for them to call, you know, the city phone, leave a message for me to call them from that city phone. I I think it's just more professional and plus for the FOIA reason too.
Counsel, Councilman, do you have an actuarial, actuarial report on the, on the map?
On the what?
But do we have a number, actual?
On the what? I understand.
Do we have actual numbers on how much?
He's joking.
Oh, yeah, I have it from the IT department. Actually, I do.
You gotta remember, he's an engineer. Engineers don't joke.
They don't joke.
They don't joke.
They don't joke.
Take it serious.
Counselor Chair, I do have it, so I can.
Can you give us, uh, Councilman, can you give us an Excel sheet on that, please?
By the way, he actually has an actuary reportedly IT director.
I told you.
I do.
Told you. Uh, Councilman Abdul Ha.
I just want to say the final say, when somebody FOIA my personal phone, even if I am elected official, it's for the court, not for anybody else. So if anybody wants, the court will decide if anybody wants.
subpoena. That would be a subpoena.
Yes.
But the FOIA is different, the rules.
Counselor Chair, just to be exact, on record, uh, according to the IT director, can I, the cost would be roughly seventeen sixty-four for the rest of the budget.
For all the council.
For all the council.
Okay. Alright, so motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Abdul Ha. Alright, so motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Abdul Haq. All favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, ma'am clerk.
It was in the beginning. Robert Conston? You're first.
Yes.
Tom Wenzel?
No.
Dave Abdallah?
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Nancy Brier? It was a no, but now I'm a yes. Zuhair Abdahak?
No.
And Moby Dun?
Absolutely, yes.
Motion carries, five two.
Okay, motion carried. Next item on our agenda is item eleven A ordinances. Oh, I'm sorry, was there, there was another one with, uh, Councilman Wenzel.
Uh, there's mine, there's mine for.
Well, no, yours was in regards to city phones.
No, my.
Legal counsel, I'm sorry, okay, go ahead. So item nine B, legal counsel for, uh, city council specifically, special legal counsel, uh, by Councilman Ahmad, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilor. Uh, I would like to, uh, motion, uh, that the city council hereby sets aside fifty thousand dollars to cover the legal fees for the special matter to be specified.
Or which budget? Is that the?
That's a motion of.
I'll re, I'll read it, council.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, it says, um, pursuant to, um, the mayor or the city council may retain special legal counsel to appear of counsel to the corporation. Counsel for the purpose of assisting the corporation counsel for a special matter and for such limited time and purpose as the mayor or council shall specify. The city council hereby sets aside fifty thousand to cover the legal fees for a special matter to be specified.
Yeah, I don't know why it doesn't say mayor, uh, mayor. This is a council, uh.
It's, it's following the charter. That's what the charter says. I, I mean, you can look at five point one.
I was gonna ask the same question. So let's just say we're gonna ha, we're gonna, we're gonna hire, um, you know, um, a corporation counsel, John Doe.
We need just a counsel.
It'd be fifty thousand dollars, John Doe would be for us. But the part that says the mayor, are you suggesting the mayor can hire, hire an additional corporation counsel for fifty?
The charter says the mayor or this, I'm reading what the charter.
The mayor or the city.
I know, but. Yeah.
So this is.
Proposals for himself.
Well, it says the city council hereby sets aside fifty thousand to cover the legal fees for the special matter to be spec, to be identified.
Uh, councilor?
Specified. The charter says the mayor or the city council may retain special legal counsel. That's five point one three, the charter. I can't change the charter. And you can't change the charter.
But that's, but we're not, we're not doing a charter right now. We're doing a new motion. Because per the charter, you said the mayor or the council, correct?
Well, yeah, I sent this out to everybody so I can get.
No, no, I'm saying, I'm saying, but I'm saying per the charter says the mayor or the council, correct? Okay.
For the charter.
Because it says either or, then either or can make a motion and a proposal. And in this case, Councilman Ahmad makes a motion, we'd have to take out mayor and then make it the council only.
Say, no, it doesn't say that, that they can specify a special to take the mayor out. It says the charter said the mayor or the council.
I know, and he's.
So.
We're never asking mayor.
No, to hire the council. So, so you say, city council says, um, well, I have a specific perfect, we need the fifty thousand to use for this purpose. That's not the mayor, that's you.
Right.
And you do that. Now, if the mayor says, I, I have it, then you have to decide. If the mayor has the right by the charter to say, I want a special counsel for this topic.
So then in that.
So you can't contradict.
We'd have a corporation counsel, a special counsel for the mayor, and potentially.
Yes.
A special counsel for the city council.
I'm reading what the charter.
No, I understand, I understand.
Technically, you can.
But I'm just saying, my, my concern is this, the intent of the council members that I've spoken with is they wanted, uh, uh, an attorney specifically for the city council.
You can't do that according to the charter. There's one corporation counsel per the charter. And that's why I, I sent you. One corporation counsel for the, for the, for the city. You can get a special counsel for the limited purpose. Otherwise, you have a lawyer representing you against the charter, and I can't talk to you. I can only talk to this lawyer because he's representing you.
Yes.
And I can't talk to this client, and that's not what the charter says. That's why the charter says one corporation counsel. Now, you can retain your counsel for an issue to get your second opinion, like you said. That's what this motion says.
Roger, this, I'm gonna want you to know how this council feels right now with what you just read. I don't think anybody here or any in the audience likes what you just read or the, the approach that you brought towards this council. And let me, let me just finish. I know you want to speak up on it. I don't think anybody here agrees with the motion that you just read, and I think what they, we'd like it to state. You, you're right, the charter states mayor or counsel. We're saying this resolution is only counsel. It's not mayor.
So you're going, you're going against the charter?
No, 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 no.
But please, sir, I cannot interrupt. I'm not here to tell you what you'd like to hear.
Let him finish his comment total.
I thought he did, that's why.
Okay, the verbiage in the charter says one thing. Mayor or counsel can have a special counsel, right, or special legal representation. We're just, we're just gonna say that.
Can't ask, and you've done it before.
Which, let me finish. Mayor or counsel. It doesn't say mayor and counsel must share, or, or when you make a resolution, it has to say mayor and counsel. It says mayor or counsel. You just said to me, it says mayor or counsel.
You want me to answer you?
Well, let, 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 let me finish that off, please.
Verbiage, please, council.
Please, ask me the question.
All of them. Back to the charter, mayor or counsel. This council is asking that the verbiage say counsel only. It doesn't need to say mayor and counsel. I don't know why you're so defensive on wanting to, wanting to, uh, uh, give this council what they want and not removing the.
Give me one, but don't label my comments, please. I know you want to, your narrative wants to be that, but that's not what I'm.
But that's real.
And I, no, 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 I told you, I am not gonna say what you want to hear all the time.
I know, you've.
Now, I'm saying something, I'm reading the charter. And I'm saying you're going against the charter if you change the charter with this motion, what you're saying. I'm saying you have the power to set aside special counsel. You could put aside a fifty thousand and you pick the issue. And that council will represent what you're saying and look at it pursuant to the charter. Now, if you want to say, change the charter, you need an amendment to do that. And that's what you're trying to do. You're not gonna set up two corporation counsels.
Wait, excuse me, nothing from the audience, please.
You're not gonna set up two char, uh, corporation councils as what you're saying you want to do, because the charter does not permit that.
By the way, Roger.
Now, you may not like to hear that, but that's what the charter said.
Roger.
And I'm quoting, and I sent this out Sunday. I get no feedback, no comments, no.
I didn't receive it either.
I didn't receive it, and I was the one who asked you.
To, uh, Councilman Abdallah, and I sat with Councilman Abdallah. Sorry, Councilman Ahmed, and I looked at it with Councilman Ahmed, that's a Councilman. I looked at it with Councilman Abid on Sunday. And I, I didn't, and I sent it out. That's all I can do, and you guys can look at it. Now, if you're saying it's, it's against the charter or it's not against the charter, and you want to change the charter, then you have to give me the comment. It changes the charter to have two lawyers. I don't miss Miyaki wants that, but that's against the charter. Okay? It does not say you get two lawyers.
Okay.
Don't contradict each other. It doesn't say that.
Okay.
But why would you mention a different lawyer right now?
He brought it up.
Who brought it up?
Mr. Miyaki. Brought it up three times.
I don't know.
See here, okay, Councilman Bedun finished, and then Councilman Abdul Haq.
Roger, I just want you to know, if you felt that I was trying to paint you to be something else, I definitely wasn't. I'm sorry. I love you. I'm gonna go back to what I said. Please don't interrupt me. I love you. The charter says the mayor or counsel. We are asking for a resolution. I say counsel. That's it. Can you go back, redraft this? Get us in the, if your opinion says you can't do that, please put it in writing for me.
I mean, I'll, I'll put in writing again. I will, I will show the charter, I did put it in there. But I'll, I'll, I'm just gonna follow the charter, what it said.
Councilor.
Okay, I know, but.
Councilor.
I, I'll, I'll give a clarification, just one second. So if we let, let's just say we go with this particular suggestion and we approve it. And there's John Doe or Jane Doe hired as a special counsel, special legal counsel to the city council. Okay?
To review a particular issue.
No, but that's, see, but that's, I don't.
That's what the charter says.
I, 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 I'm just clarifying. But if every time, I should use a hypothetical right now. Every time there's an agenda item on the council and anybody on the city council decides to get a second opinion from that particular corporation council.
Not even a second.
Provided, or an opinion, provided it stays underneath the fifty thousand dollar gap. Is it at the city council's discretion when, if, and how many times they use this particular person, provided they stay under fifty thousand? Is that the case?
That's what we can look at. Doesn't, I, I didn't get any direction to that effect. I got that you wanted fifty thousand set aside. You can do it for five thousand, like what you did with Mark Roberts when he advised Lysenya. You appointed him to give an issue on Act seventy-eight. I don't know what happened to that five thousand. I don't know if it's been returned, but Mark Roberts was hired to advise her in the Act seventy-eight issue with the lawsuit that we had against the seventy-eight, Act seventy-eight commissioners. You designated him to represent Lysenya, and it, and I, your check was paid. I don't know if, if what happened after that, but you did designate the lawyer to represent that issue.
I'm gonna.
Wait, one second. Okay, Councilman Abdul Haq, then Councilman Ahmad.
Roger.
Yes, sir.
I would direct you to read the motion which was made by Councilman Bill Bazey, seconded by Councilman Ray Muscat, number nineteen dash two five three, where they put the motion and passed it to hire lawyer Shank and twelve, Havel, whatever their name for the city council, basically, and they put specific number of money amount. And they, uh, they ordered basically or directed the mayor and the clerk to sign it and for the treasurer to pay. And they went to court and they prevailed. So. And that, and that was made by our mayor, Bill Bazey, and by Councilman Ray Muscat, and he is here. And Denise Maxwell too. So there is a precedence, and I don't think we violating anything. We just want to set aside fifty thousand dollars for legal fees for the city council as needed. And you will know what is the subject when the subject comes up.
I understand the case was involving a specific issue, and I know Mr. Miyaki oppose, I believe, opposed that. That's why you guys went to court, opposed having a special counsel appointed. And the court said the council has a right to appoint a special counsel pursuant to the charter. And all I'm saying is, I'm not one side or the other side. I'm saying we follow the charter.
We are not violating, we have every right.
I, I rudely interrupted you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No, go ahead.
No, but if you're saying, if you want me to look at that case and get the language from the court, I will prepare it for you. But I'm saying that the fifty thousand was specifically to follow the charter, and the lawyer appointed follows the charter. And a special counsel will follow the charter. We can't amend it. It doesn't say that the council can appoint only for itself without, as I think you guys wanted to have said, um, it, but it does lay out clearly what, how to do it and what to do. You can't, you, you, you can't set up two corporation councils.
We, whenever.
And you can't have a lawyer representing the city council versus a lawyer you say, representing administration.
Roger.
That's not what the charter said.
Do we have that, do we have the right to set aside fifty thousand dollars aside for legal fees?
I don't see anything that says you can't.
Okay.
That's what she did, right? But it doesn't say that you, you, so, so if, if that fifty thousand can be drawn by special counsel, but what if the mayor wants a special counsel? What if the police want a special counsel?
He has actually.
You got.
He has many lawyers, not just one.
Okay. You have lawyers, he has lawyers.
Anyway.
Wanted to follow the charter, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, Councilman Wenzel.
Councilor, I, I suggest that we let Councilman Ahmad read his motion the way it is, and we'll vote on it and, and take our chances of violating a charter or not.
I don't think that's how we operate, take our chances.
Okay, I.
I, I'm, I'm saying that how, look, you followed the chart. If you're not, then we take steps to make sure you follow the chart and meet compliance.
So, so what you can do is you can make your motion subject to complying with the charter.
No. Because that's not what our motion is. Our motion is we're setting aside fifty thousand dollars.
Tell me the thing, unless somebody can prove otherwise, that it's not in compliance with the charter, you have a right to do this.
Okay, let me read my motion again, and let's take it for a vote.
Alright, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilor. I move that the city council may retain special legal counsel to appear of counsel to the corporation council for the purpose of assisting the corporation council for a special matter and for such limited time and purpose as the council shall specify. The city council hereby sets aside fifty thousand dollars to cover the legal fees for the special matter to be specified.
Second.
Okay, and, and are you adding on this subject to being in compliance with the charter?
I think it is in compliance, the way I look at it.
Okay. Alright, so a motion made by Councilman Ahmad, who is the second?
Zuhair.
Councilman Abdul Haq, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Wait, wait a minute, I just had one. Maybe we should add instead of special, uh, thing, you, you didn't say plural, you said sub special event.
No, special counsel.
Special, special matter. Special matters.
Special matter.
More than one, it can happen more than once.
Yeah, yeah. You have up to fifty thousand.
They make it all plural, all the matters, sort of matter.
But it's not like my matter, it's anybody from the council.
It could happen several times, not just one, one matter.
So a motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Abdul Haq, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on our agenda is an item for discussion by Councilman Tom Wenzel.
Thank you, Councilor. Um, as many of you know, for years I've been, uh, vocal about, um, uh, the contracts and the pay for the, uh, our T P O M workers. And I've, I've been, you know, I'd say vocal for years and years. And not one council member, not discrediting any of you, but no one's been more vocal about them getting as much as possible than, than myself. You know, um, many con, many recent contracts that the city have signed with, with unions, uh, many if not all have, have contained signing bonuses. And to this day and age, with the recent U A W contract, unions from around the world and around the country have benefited. Uh, not with just good contracts, but with life-changing contracts. The T P O M contract is a good contract, but they deserve more than this. Unfortunately, this is the contract that they're gonna get, and they, they did get some, some, some good increases. But when we approved this contract, a, a, a couple of times, it was brought up that we need to approve this contract right away so they can get their signing bonus before the holidays. And it was brought up at least two times. And I'm sure one or two of us voted with the, with emotion thinking that they, we wanted to give these guys this contract so they can get their signing bonus for the holidays. We had a, we had a union representative here that day, an H R director here that day. Neither of them spoke up and said, hey, wait a minute, there are no signing bonuses in this contract. Making us believe that there were signing bonuses. But I want to make a motion tonight that we, you know, we've accepted the contract, and regardless of what was said at the last meeting about not accepting that contract until we see the final copy. We, I sent out an email and I said everyone and our intent was never to take away any of the, 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 the pay increases that they had already been receiving with this new contract negotiated. On the contrary, we, we, we would approve a higher rate of pay and everything. But what I want to do is make a motion tonight to gi, uh, give them all the signing bonuses so they get their money before the holidays at the pay period this, this Friday, December twenty second on that check. And I, I'm up for the, the discussion about how much I, I'm taking five hundred dollar signing bonus. I mean.
Councilman, I just have a point.
One second, one second, one second. Let him, let him finish his motion first.
That's, yeah.
Okay, so.
I don't have a motion yet. I'm just, we're discussing then we can make.
No, no, well, no, no, no. We need a motion.
Before we can discuss.
Then somebody's got seconded, then we're going to discuss it.
And we can amend it.
The only reason I said we're going to start with a discussion is because corporation council said this was potentially illegal to change the contract.
Wait, I'm not, okay.
Well, no, no, let, let me finish here. That's why I said a hard discussion so at least we can have a starting point. Now you've made the motion and now somebody's got second that motion. Who's seconding that motion?
I second.
Okay, Councilman Ahmad is seconding it. And now we're going to go ahead and open it to discussion, but before we discuss it.
Council Chair. In my, in a mo, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion, the city council uh, recommend or approve a signing bonus separate from their contract that they got. Well, I'll call it a bonus, not a signing bonus, a, a bonus given to the T P O M workers. Nothing to do with the contract or, or the, the specifics of the contract, but a bonus to those workers in the amount of five hundred dollars and to be, to be paid out by this, 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 this Friday's pay paycheck.
Okay, are you seconding it, Councilman Ahmad?
Yes.
So I believe if I'm not mistaken, it'd be just a budget amendment, is that correct? Controller? So it'd be a budget amendment, not necessarily a contract.
No, nothing to do with contract.
Okay, so it's a budget amendment. With it, can you come up for a second, please? So with this particular budget amendment. Okay, whoever wants to comment, that's fine. Can that, I mean, obviously we got to vote on it, but I don't want to vote on something that can't be done. So the question is, do you have the capability, man, woman, power, logistics to be able to get it done by Friday?
That's.
And money available.
Money is always an issue. Uh, secondly, that is going to take manpower because we're already in the process of doing payroll for Friday. So this is the last minute, we have to push that button to submit by five o'clock tomorrow. And I've got quite a few things on my plate that I need to get going and get in before five o'clock tomorrow. So adding this on, and I think it's a great idea. Thank you. I think that's great. However, this would really be a pressing time for us to do that in such a short notice.
Okay. Let me just make sure, just one second. Wait, do I say something, H R? Come on up.
So when we negotiated with T P O M, when we brought you the T A, um, the parameters of the T A really had not been changed since August. So the wages, those components, uh, were the same, um, in August, September and October. What we were trying to work out was the Tuesday through Friday schedule. And what were the crew sizes going to look like and how does that vary between the highway water and building and maintenance department? When we brought this to you before and asked for you to act on it as opposed to tabling it, it was so that we would be able to get the wage increase in place in a timely manner to the T A. Because according to the Public Employee Relationship Act, which is the law in Michigan that governs union relations in the public sector, we're not allowed to do a retro. So what we were trying to do is be timely because we had achieved the T A on the heels of the union ratifying it to get that implemented. So that was the sense of urgency that we were trying to communicate. We did not mean to indicate that there was any kind of a signing bonus that was not a part of our proposals during the whole, uh, seven months that we were bargaining with the group. Um, I apologize if, if something that I said led you to believe that that was the case. So we were more concerned about trying to be timely with the wage implementation for the increase for for the employees, um, in terms of, uh, uh, the inability for it to be, uh, for us to do a retro.
Point of order.
That's what we were trying to achieve.
This has nothing to do with the contract.
Yeah, he's, he's doing a budget amendment in this case. That's why I, I want to clarify.
So, so the other component is that, uh, we have to remember that wages are a mandatory subject of bargaining. So in terms of the awesome intent of wanting to recognize the great staff that we have working for us in the clerical and D P W department, I commend you for that intent. But wages are a mandatory topic of bargaining, even if they're one time.
So quick question and then Councilman Beedon is next, if you don't mind if I can jump in.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, are, how are the bonuses allowed?
Wages are a mandatory subject of bargaining. So any way, whatever you call it, when we're dealing with wages, that's a mandatory subject of bargaining.
So Councilman Beedon first and Councilman Abdul Haq.
I, I, I want to actually, um, the, the, the controller, I'm sorry, the H R director did indicate that there was no retro pay, uh, during that meeting. She did, uh, and she did also let us know uh, that they were, you know, it was time sensitive. They wanted to get the pays out. I do recall her saying that. My question to you is in that T P O A co, contract, which I know you've worked intensively, so I'm sure you probably know the ins and outs of that contract. And I'd, uh, I would never believe if you told me you wouldn't recall. Um, but if you don't, you can also put it in writing for me via email. Did anyone else get a signing bonus?
You mean in terms of any of our other employee groups?
No, 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 from the T P O A M. Did anybody in the T P O A M, did you, did any specific individuals receive signing bonuses uh, versus other employees not, not received them?
Are you asking specific terms, Councilman, or into?
No, no, no.
No, your, your question.
Yeah, my question is, did anybody in T P O A M at all?
Did any current employee in T P O M receive a signing bonus when we bargained this contract? No, they did not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Abdul Haq?
Okay, since both of you are there and Lisa is, I hope she's listening to us. This city council passed a resolution seven to zero to give money to the fire and police and all the general government from the ARPA money and restricted funds. Why it hasn't been done yet? And especially B L N has received seventy seven thousand dollars to help us with such issues like that. It seems like they got more money than our employees.
So I'm just going to share, and again, as your H R director, looking at all the employee groups across the organization and how we're trying to balance our resources with also dealing with what I've shared with you before, was a longstanding wage suppression issue for us. Um, which of course then impacted our ability to recruit, um, and hire for the vacant positions that we have in the city. So my question about the seven hundred thousand that was set aside, that came out of the general fund?
It came out of ARPA money.
It's from the unrestricted seven point two million dollars left from the ARPA money.
So.
It wasn't seven, it was seven hundred, but my calculation is around four hundred thousand was the numbers I gave fifteen hundred for police and fire and thousand for all the employees who worked during COVID.
So, so those are federal dollars, so we have to follow the guidelines under, uh, the federal, uh, requirements for us to do that when you are, when you are trying to expend those dollars. And so the challenge had been record keeping, um, verifying who, uh, worked during that time. And I've been gathering that information and I've been collating that information so that we can identify the number of employees so that we can make an estimate of what that might look like. Um, this is an option that is available to other communities as well in terms of where those dollars are going to be spent. And, uh, with all the other competing priorities that we have as an organization, we're trying to weigh that. So federal dollars have strings attached to them. We're trying to make sure that we cover all of those things. That's the delay in our ability to implement your wishes is that we're also trying to ensure that we meet the requirements.
When we moved last year or the year before, two million, two hundred thousand from that money to the general fund, did we report that to the federal government? Was there any regulations to move that money to the general?
You're now asking accounting questions that I can't answer, but you also know that we reported it and that our financial statements passed the law. So that could assure you of any concerns that you might have about how dollars were spent or moved.
I, I understand.
I'm, I'm not an accountant.
No, honestly.
Immediately.
Uh, we never reported that. We just moved it simply by simple resolution from the city council. Am I correct, Ray?
I believe so.
Thank you. So there is no regulation or anything. Let's get it on and stop running around and let's give those people the money. If there is anything left, if you spend it, please be honest with us and tell us, Mr. Mayor, if there is money left from that seven million dollars.
Can I just comment on that? You're talking about the ten million dollars that was revenue loss that we did move over to the fund balance. There was seven point seven million dollars that we did move from ARPA to the fund balance. That's what you're talking about. The first time that we talked about the seven hundred thousand, it kept talking about ARPA funds. That's where you're getting confused. We took the ten million as revenue loss from the ARPA funds and put it in to the general fund that could be used for anything. That is true. Then we came back and we thought the seven hundred thousand that you were requesting was coming out of the ARPA funds, which is restricted because I think it was twenty four million and I'm not a hundred percent sure of my numbers, but I think it was twenty four million that we had gotten for, for ARPA. Ten million of it was for revenue loss, so you could spend it any way you wanted. The fourteen million is what's restricted. That's what the H R director is talking about.
That's correct. And the city council was very clear that they passed the resolution from the unrestricted funds. And I really, I really, really would appreciate it if you guys can do a little bit more work and pass this money to the people before the end of the year.
Council Chair.
Councilman?
Thank you. Um, the seven hundred thousand that was set aside, it was voted on unanimously by the city council. And, uh, Mr. Abdul Haq's, uh, resolution to pay out the, that money to the, uh, COVID workers, people that worked during COVID, he just stated is about four hundred thousand. My bonuses for these employees is only about thirty, thirty thousand dollars. Not hundreds of thousands, thirty thousand dollars. We have seven hundred set aside, supposedly, I hope. Four hundred thousand and thirty thousand. That's, we're not asking for, we're not asking for a miracle.
By the thirty thousand might even be a long shot. I mean, if there's a, there's, there's sixty two, but always fifty eight paying members, so. Fifty eight times five hundred.
Twenty nine thousand dollars. That's beautiful. Great math, man. You're great.
Council Chair.
Okay, uh, Councilman, then we're going to go.
I just have a question for Councilman Wensel. So is this like a one-time?
Yeah.
Thing, one time, so it's not under.
Nothing, nothing to do with the, nothing to do with their salary, uh, nothing to do in negotiated hourly wages or benefits or anything. It's just one time. Thank you for your hard work. We appreciate it. Hope you stick around.
The only comment I've got on this is I know multiple times, whether it was ARPA money or through a motion by Councilman, uh, Wensel, or it was ARPA money, or it was something that I know Councilman Abdul Haq talked about, and then multiple times as council body, we voted yes on this. My only concern with this, and this is with all due respect, ladies, where there's a will, there's a way. And quite honestly, for the last year on this particular subject specifically, I find there's no will. And I'm just being blunt.
Council Chair.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I, I'm going to go back to where we started a few hours ago. I mean, that's why we need extra positions to do what we need. Okay, we're stretched thin right now with everything, all the contracts that we had in front of us. There's contracts, union contracts were, were never be even touched before we, we took over three years ago. We, we brought these contracts, especially the dispatchers. The dispatchers were not working with a contract, so we negotiate a lot of contracts, you know, we're down to one right now. So we are doing everything we can. We're doing our due diligence, you know, we're going to ch, job fairs. We're doing hiring, so we are doing everything we can. So we are stretched thin right now, so.
But again, the size of the city. It's been about a year.
Council Chair, uh, you know what? If you guys want, we can tell you exactly what everybody's working on every day if you want. Okay, we are working hard. We are working diligently, you know, to get what we need to do to keep the city running. And that's why we asked for the previous positions. Is because right now we're just operating the city li, like we're supposed to, obviously, but we have a lot of work that's coming our way and we don't have the resources.
But let me tell you where I disagree with you on that respectfully. Something I learned a long time ago from, yeah, I, I learned it in college and then it was repeated again to me by a business trainer that I, I studied with for a long time. Your number one most important employee is the first line of defense. So for example, in any business, any business, you could have the most prominent C E O, the most prominent board of directors, the most beautiful building, the most beautiful parking lot. But if that man or woman that answers the phone and says, good afternoon, this is so-and-so company and the morale is not there, they're not happy, they're just not all in, all that stuff on top for nothing.
Yeah.
And in my view, the morale has not been the highest for that particular segment of this particular organization because from what a lot of them have told me over the years, and I'm not negotiating a contract, Roger, they're not happy with the dollar figure they're being paid. And if we could figure out a way, so we figured out many ways to pay a lot of things, the pay is five hundred dollars. It's like two dinners, two, three dinners. If there's a will, there's a way. I'm not seeing a will. And if there's no will, then what I'd rather have my way, I like transparency to say, Dave or Tom or Joe or Bob, you don't want to do it. Then that's different. But I don't want to get the song and dance of how we want to do it, but then we turn around.
Yeah, Council. Councilman, no, Councilman, Council Chair, I, I, um, I'm doing a housekeeping matter. The, the, the president of the union got up with our H R and said, we are happy with this contract. We are happy. It was then brought at the next meeting that somehow you had to see the contract by the motion. I reviewed the motion as a housekeeping matter. It said it had to be a final, a final contract presented to the mayor and eight, and, and the clerk. It didn't say by the motion, the language that I read with the clerk's office, did not say it had to come back to the city council. That got put in, interjected or intervened in the last council that, no, the, no, we have to review it and we haven't seen the final contract, therefore they should not be getting the low, the, the, the raises. And we should, we can.
Point of order, that was never said. That was never said. Never said, no.
That was what was said last time as a housekeeping matter. I took the time to review your motion.
B S.
And review your statement. And don't insult the.
One second, one second, one of order. Okay, but in this case, Roger.
So, no, no, to, to you, Council Chair, and with all due respect, that contract and that president of that union stood up and said, we like this, we voted on it, we approved it. Then they were questioned, but what is the majority? What about the others? All distracted.
Right now we're talking about.
Distra, now are they happy? They said they were.
Okay, but right now we're talking about a holiday bonus. That's it.
You're talking of saying that no one's, not you per se, but you, it, it's being said that they didn't, oh, they didn't like it and they've had a year and they're disgruntled and saying that was what took the unions together with administration to come up with something that both parties like.
Okay.
And approve.
Councilman Wensel, then Councilman Abdul Haq, then we're going to go ahead and take this one for a vote.
Thank, thank you, Council Chair. Very quickly, no one up here, none of us seven ever said that we don't want them to get the raises that they've already been getting. Now, one, show me proof and I'll quit this council the second you give me the proof.
You said, last time you go back over the minutes that how?
That I said that you did not, you, you said.
Final contract, you could not have approved it. You would not approve it. That's what you said. Not that you didn't like the union, didn't get them getting money, but you said it was conditional and it should have been conditional on you getting the final contract. And I said that's not what the motion said. That's not what the president wanted.
I'm going to say, uh, we, I'll watch the tape and Roger just said that we said that we did not want them to get the pay. Is that, is that what anybody heard? That we, that's what he said. He said, council said that they did not want them to get the pay that the raisers did.
David.
We'll watch the tape. Yeah, we'll watch the tape.
Councilman Abdul Haq, go ahead. And that's, now it's going to take this for a vote.
My dear friend Rajar, if we offer you fifty thousand dollars increase in your salary, would you say no?
Yes. Hey, lawyer. Did I say that from the beginning?
No.
Hey, lawyer. Yeah, hey, all of us.
Okay.
Hold back, please.
Mr. Mayor, the city council passed a resolution. How much time you think your administration needs to disburse the money from the unrestricted funds from the COVID? How much time?
But this is the last thing.
Take your, take your best shot.
But then to sign up, but then they're working.
Two years.
Yes. Yeah, so that's the thing we're working on.
How much, how much time? Give me the worst time.
I, I thought the, I thought, I thought H R said that how they're investigating to figure out who worked. Is that correct, Madam Chair?
But it has the worst case scenario, how much time would you need?
I don't, that's not my specialty. I'm going to shut my mouth.
I and the mayor and the H R knows. They make the payroll. They know who got paid at the end of COVID when the governor said of, uh, COVID is over.
You're asking if they kept records and if they weren't records.
We're talking about the money we want to give them from the unrestricted funds. Give me your best or your worst shot, months, two, three. What do you guys think?
Honor before six months or possibly more. I don't know. I can't answer that. I'm not, I'm beyond.
Let's go ahead and take this for a vote. There's a motion on the table by Councilman Wensel to give a five hundred dollar bonus, one time, holiday bonus as a budget, as a budget amendment for this fiscal year and to be paid according to the motion by this Friday.
December twenty second.
Okay.
December twenty second.
So we extend the week to twenty.
All right, before the end of the calendar year.
I'm going to do it before Christmas.
But let's, let's be reasonable though, Councilman. Before the end of, are you okay with that, before the end of the ca, calendar year?
Well, they can't because there won't be another pay period before the end of the calendar year. This is the last one.
Give them a special check.
Yeah, a special check.
All right, let, let's just, let's, let's work with them. Before the end of the calendar year, please.
Well, do whatever you can to get it by Friday.
Okay.
Not.
But we can't make a motion, do whatever you can.
No.
But we can't make a motion, do whatever you can. So, so to the, to the, to the best of their abilities, as early as possible before the end of the calendar year.
By no later than December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three.
Who's the second originally? I give it back, Councilman Ahmad. All in favor, please state aye. Any opposed?
No. A contract is a contract.
We, you guys are all over the place. We're not gonna get the motion cracked.
Okay.
Can you repeat that?
I'll repeat it again. The motion by Councilman Tom Wenzel.
Yes.
Seconded by Councilman Ahmad to give a holiday bonus of five hundred dollars based on a budget amendment for this fiscal year to be paid to the TPOAM employees.
All people AM.
All two POAM employees, no later than December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
That's a chair. One time.
One time.
One time.
One time.
Didn't the HR director just say that that was illegal, that you can't give out bonuses?
Well, so.
We'll get a legal opinion.
Yeah, so anything, so, so on that, Cindy.
It's nothing to do with the contract.
I understand that.
Wages are not a bonus.
The contract or wages.
Don't mention the contract.
Okay, sorry. I'm sorry, can I just add, it is not illegal.
I know.
It is subject to bargaining. Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Here, Madam Clerk.
Um, I'm so sorry. Dave Abdullah.
Yes.
Zuhair Abdahak.
Yes.
Uh, Moby Dun.
Yes.
Tom Wenzel.
Yes.
Robert Coniston.
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad.
Yes.
And Nancy Brier.
No, I still say a contract's a contract and they don't have time.
Motion carries six one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is ordinances and resolution. Uh, item eleven A by Councilman Abdul Haq.
Do I have to read the resolution?
It's your resolution, choose.
Yes. Councilor Chair, this is a resolution to be discussed by the city council at the special meeting on December nineteen, twenty twenty-three, sponsored by Councilman Zuhair Abdalhaq. Whereas the mayor shall follow the charter in all the, his decisions related to the city of Dearborn Heights. Whereas Mayor Bazey has ignored the rules of Act Seventy-Eight by suspending the meeting of Act Seventy-Eight Commission. Whereas Mayor Bazey has cost the city of Dearborn Heights over two and a half million in the way he handled the WVC GC contract. Whereas Mayor Bazey hired two police directors without following Act Seventy-Eight rules. Whereas Mayor Bazey falsely claimed that Act Seventy-Eight was never approved by the city electors in nineteen sixty-four and he confirmed later that it exists. His contract negotiation was the police supervisors, which he signed next to the unions represented. Whereas Mayor Bazey disregarded several city council resolutions. Mayor Bazey has shown this respect to the chart into the rules of the office which he is holding. And he committed several violations since he took office. For all the above mentioned reasons, here let it be resolved that the city council of Dearborn Heights passed a vote, no confidence in Mayor Bilbers.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Abdul Haq, seconded by.
I second for discussion.
Seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion, Councilor Chair, Councilman Baidun?
We all need to keep in mind a few things here, Councilor Chair. There's gonna be times where we all disagree on certain things. Um, but you need to also keep in mind, uh, that discussions are healthy and sometimes discussions can be emotional. Uh, you know, there's, you know, we, we would all be lying here today if we said our parents didn't all argue, our siblings didn't all argue. And, you know, ultimately, some of these things that, you know, the, that, that were brought forward today by this councilman uh, could, could be true. But I don't also believe that this is a, an ill intention of the mayor and, and, and doing things out of spite or doing things out of hate. Uh, maybe some of these things are some bad decisions, but I don't think this is a no confidence. I think this is the mayor that ultimately, you know, ran for this office. And let me tell you guys something, me and the mayor disagree almost every single time. However, he's still elected by the, by the, by the people. He's still the mayor of Dearborn Heights. Um, and you guys are probably thinking, I can't believe Mo was saying this. Um, you, you, you would be surprised at things that the mayor has actually done, uh, to me. But that, that's okay. Cause at the end of the day, the residents are gonna choose the mayor and the residents are gonna choose the council. I think this right here is a little bit too much. Uh, Mr. Abdalhaq, I know this is something that you wanna throw forward here and, and I'm sure some of these things are true. Uh, but I also think that this is also insulting some of the residents, seventy-one percent of the voters that did vote for him. Seventy-four, uh, seventy-four. Uh, so, and so I see a little bit of confidence if he remembers his percentage on how many votes he's received. I'm glad you know that, that a number. Uh, but, but really, I know the mean, mean councilman Abdalhaq probably, uh, you know, see eye to eye on many things, but I think on this specific subject, uh, I think this is, um, a little kind of crossing, a little, you know, a little too much here. Uh, I think, you know, you can have these discussions with the mayor. I think, you know, the future council should have these discussions if they feel a certain way. Uh, but to put a, 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 a resolution of no confidence to a mayor that was elected by the people. Guys, I'm gonna have to disagree on this regardless. If I feel for the mayor, I'm still gonna respect the chain of command knowing that he is the mayor of the city of Dearborn Heights. So I'm gonna have to disagree with this resolution, guys.
Councilor Chair. Um, Mayor, that's also an insult on you guys on the council, this resolution, because you guys approved a lot of things though. Especially the Warren Valley Golf Course. So I didn't have a, I didn't have a checkbook for, for the money. So everything that was spent, you guys approved. The contract, you guys approved. Everybody that wanted to bet on the course, you guys approved. So you guys voted for this person, council, the councilman sitting next to you. And obviously he's disrespecting you by putting this as no confidence for something that you guys approved. Now, there's a lot of misinformation in here and you guys know, uh, the council members that's been in the meetings that we spent for, for the last year and a half in closed meetings. And I can tell you one thing. A lot of things that in the city was in disarray and you guys know those things. You know, we shared a lot of things with you and we didn't wanna alarm the residents. So we met in closed sessions to discuss the issues that we had. You know, the corruption, the misuse of force, a lot of things that, you know, I'm gonna address later. You know, when, when it gets brought up and I'm sure it's gonna get brought up, you know, at the next, uh, probably comments. But you guys were privy to a lot of information. So I did what I had to do per my responsibilities to take care of the city. So again, you know, you guys can vote the way you are, but what I did is I did for the residents, I did for the city of Dearborn Heights for what was, when I took over, the stuff that I, I, I had to endure to get the city forward. And again, you guys were privy to a lot of information that I shared with you in these closed sessions.
Councilor Chair, Councilman, just one last thing. I, I, uh, I know the mayor said, you know, he brought up the golf course and saying he'd be insulting us. I don't change my vote on the golf course. I openly supported the golf course and I knew why I supported the golf course. Uh, and I've said it, I believe, uh, it was, it was quoted in the Detroit Free Press, believe it or not. Um, I did not say it was a good contract for the city. I said the Issa brothers are the best decision for the city. Um, that's what I stated on, on the, on, on the golf course and I don't change my vote on the golf course. But there are some of these certain things here that I can say, should I have been done by this administration or this mayor? But that's not gonna say that I felt a no confidence in the mayor. So I don't really think that this resolution put forward. I think this is just a ta- just to taint the mayor. I think this is, could be like a political thing. Look, our job is to have a fiduciary duty. Our job isn't to be political against the administration of the mayor. That's regardless of how I feel regarding about Mayor Bill Bazey, he's still the mayor. I'm still gonna respect the, the chain of command. Uh, you know, I would hope that it would reciprocate back to the council, uh, but regardless of the point, I don't, I don't feel like this resolution should be brought forward. Uh, I would like to see this actually, uh, voted down by all of our colleagues. I think this is disrespectful to the actual position that the mayor carries today, not, not the individual himself, but the actual position of the mayor.
Okay, any other comments from council members?
Councilor Chair.
Councilman.
Uh, I mean, I, I kinda agree with Councilman by doing, I mean, do I agree with all the stuff in here? Maybe some of them they're true, some of them they're not. Uh, uh, we're here to work together as one team. So hopefully the administration can see that and see us as equal, so we can work together for in the future. But, um, since we have this motion, which is kinda like, I don't agree with, but I don't know if, uh, Councilman Abdalhaq can amend this motion, maybe add the corp council to it. I think it'll be.
Engineers do have jokes.
They did.
I mean, if we're trying to work as a team, if not, I mean, probably right now. But, you know, like Councilman by doing said, that's not, I mean, I hope he can just take it off the table and, uh, let's try to, uh, work with each other and move the city forward. Thank you, Councilman.
Okay, Councilor Chair.
Councilman. Since I am the one who brought this, this is not a vendetta or because I hate the mayor or anything. This is a message to the mayor that you have to serve the public to the best of your, you know, of your capability into the best interest of the residents, not the few people. Not the few persons who you have personal relation with. And this is not to remove you from office. This is not to tarnish your name. This is a message to you from me personally that open your eyes, stop doing what you're doing. Sometimes you're making mistakes, you're making fatal decisions. You're costing the city money and you're costing the city council lots of time and lots of effort. And the vote of no confidence doesn't mean that tomorrow we go into room from office or we asking people not to vote for him. And I do remember how many votes we got, Mister Baidun, and how much I got. I did not forget and I respect the public. I respect their decision. I respect the vote and you know me more than anybody that I respect the result of elections. But what you said it yourself that we haven't been respected.
Hundred percent.
Okay, and there are lots of things happen and that's why I am asking for this vote up or down on it. And I don't mind if you vote it down, but I wanna get it on record. That's my opinion of this administration and I hope this will be a wake-up call for him.
I, I just.
Uh, Councilor Chair, just to respond to.
Yeah, last quick.
Councilor Chair.
Just three.
No, no, just response to Councilman.
And, and if you recall, yes, we are being disrespected. It's a damn shame. But I am not gonna respond back with the way this administration reacts. I am not gonna be disrespectful. Like I said earlier uh, to the gentleman that approached me, I was taught by, I was raised better with my parents to kill people with kindness, to be respectful. Because that's how I was brought up. You know, that's what my teachings were, were told to us. Uh, uh, so I want you to know regardless of how this administration, and I know who you are as a person as well, uh, Councilman.
Thank you.
Why I voted for you, uh, and, and why I asked for you to service with us here on this council is that, you know, we, you know, you don't, you, you know, you, you, you can't fight hate with hate. It's never gonna happen. You can't fight disrespect with disrespect and you're never gonna fight darkness with darkness. It's just never gonna happen.
Again, this is not something out of vendetta.
I know, I know. It's a message from you to the mayor.
Message like you cannot sanction somebody, you cannot remove them from office, but you can just, you know, tell them, wake up. You're doing something wrong. Please adjust the way you do things. No more, no less.
Okay, Councilman Ahmad.
Councilor Chair, thank you very much. Uh, just like to ask Councilman Abdalhaq to please and urge you maybe take it off the table and not vote on it. I think your message was received loud and clear and hopefully we are all gonna work together as one team for the betterment of the city. So please.
Councilman Ahmad, you know how much I expect you and I will do that out of respect to you and the city council.
I appreciate you.
Okay, so is your motion to take this off the table?
Yes.
Motion to take it off the table by Councilman Abdalhaq, seconded by, support.
Support.
I, 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 I can't comment on this and, uh.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Councilman Baidun stole my thunder about the, the disrespecting part of it. But, um, you know, everyone here knows and the mayor knows that there's a lot, a lot of things that I disagree with what he's doing and I, I agree with a lot that he's doing. But a vote of no confidence, you know, this is a wake-up call for the administration and it's a wake-up call for us on city council because I think we've, we've, uh, let the pub, public down.
You did.
And there's lots of things that we should stay on top of. When we pass something and it, it doesn't get taken care of right away, we kind of put it on the back burner and we're bombarded by other things. So this is a wake-up call for all of us up here, all, all eight of us right here, okay? Uh, including, uh, Bill Bazey. And, uh, so, um, even though this does bring up a lot of things and I, I, I was writing down some stuff to say, but I'm not gonna say it. And, but I think this is a wake-up call for everyone and I'm gonna tell the residents that we hope we can do a better job for you and, you know, uh, represent you better and take care of your, your money the way you want it to be taken care of in our, in our next, the next years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. So motion to take this off the table by Councilman Abdalhaq is that seconded by Councilman Ahmad?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on our agenda, we will have short and petite and cute little comments from council members.
Councilor Chair. Can I wish everybody Merry Christmas or we have a meeting on Thursday?
This engineer, you guys all questioned him.
Everybody Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year. It's been an honor to serve you and I guess we'll see you in January. Thank you very much.
Councilor Chair.
I'm gonna be doing. Simple and brief and I, I won't go into the specifics here, but, uh, I am gonna address something here that once again, I think is happening one too many times and I'm, I'm, I'm gonna speak for myself. Uh, you know, I hope this meeting, you guys can, you know, hear what I've said, that I am not gonna disrespect anybody. But don't be fooled by my curly hair or my young age that I'm gonna tolerate anybody from this administration or anybody for that matter to disrespect me, whether it's a resident, maybe my wife could, but, uh, you know, uh, but she would never because my wife's too classy to ever do such a thing. But I'm gonna make it very clear. I've been disrespected by a director who's, hasn't even been in the city for a year. And this individual has felt the need to swear at me, raise his voice at me. He even talked to me like, like he's like, like an animal. And, and I wanna make it very clear, that is not gonna happen in the city. Because when you disrespect me or anybody on this council, you are disrespecting the voters of the city. And if this administration is okay with it, then you know what? You're also disrespecting the residents coming from this administration. This individual works for our city, um, and has disrespect, not just me, but he's also disrespected residents. He's also disrespected council members. And I'm gonna tell you, Mayor, this individual is not welcome in our chambers and I'm gonna make that very clear. I don't care what law it violates. I don't care what Roger's gonna tell me. He's not welcome here. And you wanna work with, you wanna work with, with, with somebody that has no respect for this council? Well, guess what's gonna happen from this council? Retaliation. Things like, uh, no vote, no confidence. Uh, and I don't mean retaliation in, in, in an aggressive way. I mean retaliation by, you want three new directors? Well, guess what? Your directors continue to disrespect us. So you're not gonna get them. Don't put yourself in that position because that's the only position you're given. You know, moving in today, I wanted to vote yes for those directors. I was voting yes for those directors moving in today to support those three new directors until I was disrespected uh, 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 yesterday at, at a meeting here by a director. I said, hell with that. It's not gonna happen. I'm not gonna tolerate it. And so I'm gonna tell you, moving forward, any director that disrespects a council member will be reprimanded, will be called out by the media. Will be informed by the Arab American News or the City of Dearborn Page or Channel Four or Channel Two, regardless, or, or, or our very own reporter over here, Sue. Um, I want you to know, you know, the Times, it is not okay. The same way the mayor doesn't wanna be disrespected, this council doesn't wanna be disrespected. In the same way, Mayor, that we've defended you to not be disrespected, we would hope you would do the same for this council and ensure that your directors will not ever feel comfortable enough. And to be honest with you, any director, cause I've spoken with mayors of Westland, mayors of Dearborn, mayors of, of Allen Park, mayor of, of Trenton, you know what they've said to me? If a director has ever spoken to one of my council members like that, they'd be fired immediately. That's what should have happened to that individual. He should have been fired immediately, but that's okay. I wanna also tell everybody, happy holidays, Merry Christmas.
Wow.
Happy seventieth birthday to my father again, Councilman Tom Wenzel. I thank you for putting that resolution in, in hopes that they would get that, uh, five hundred dollar bonus, uh, you know. You're somebody that's always fighting for union, you're a union man, you're, you're a family oriented man, always giving back to this community. I know what you do at Divine Child. I know what you do for your grandchildren. Uh, I, I mean, I commend you. I thank you. Somebody I truly look up to and, and I hope I could be a father, hopefully a grandfather one day, love to be like you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Wow, am I blushing? Any other comments from council members?
Council Chair.
Councilman?
I just want to wish everybody happy holidays. I mean, I, I've been very honored three times to be appointed to different positions.
It won't be the last.
Hopefully, it will be the last. And Sue, thank you for showing up to our meetings and uh, basically writing about it at the Times Herald. And for Rachel Lapone, thank you for everything you have done, all the information you gave us. Uh, Sue Kaminsky and everybody, I don't mention all your names. You've been a great friends, great residents, you always guided me in the right place. And I always look for God to guide me in the right place. And I want to thank my family who put up with my, you know, lots of absence from the house. And Mr. Mayor, you know my phone, if you ever need anything, if I can do it, I am open uh, to help the city. And God bless you all.
God bless you. Council Chair.
Councilman?
Happy holidays to everyone, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Petite, petite.
Are we gonna talk about cute grandchildren now or something else? You said cute. Okay, everybody else has said Happy Holidays, and I agree with that, but I'm ready for the announcement whenever you are.
Okay.
Council Chair. Uh, Councilman?
Thank you, Council Chair. Merry Christmas to everyone and uh, happy holidays for all those celebrating religious uh, business time of year this time and coming up. And uh, special thank you to all of you residents, the ones who attend our meetings in person and on Zoom. Because these meetings are under the Open Meetings Act, and these meetings are for you to, to see what's going on in, in the city, and they should be run professionally. And this is, this is why we have these meetings, is for you here and you on Zoom, and for everyone. So thank you all for attending, taking time out of your day, because as little as we get paid, you guys don't get paid anything. So Merry Christmas to everybody.
Thank you.
Great, great man.
Um, to the residents, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays. It's the last meeting, I hope they don't do this, this guy doesn't do this again, so. It's been eight years, it's been a blessing. I've really enjoyed it, I really honestly and truly have enjoyed it, because I love serving this great country and this great community that I love. And if nothing else, it made my mom and dad very happy for me to serve my country. So it, it, it meant a lot to me, and I'd like to hope and pray that I've made whatever little difference that I did. I'd like to thank the residents that voted for me the different times that I ran for elections. And I just wanna tell you, it's been an honor, it's been a privilege, and the one that gained the most from this is myself, because the ability, it, it, somebody taught me a long time ago, you get by giving. So when you give, you also feel good. So it's made me feel good, I gotta tell you, I, I honestly and truly, it's made me feel good. It's a lot of hours. I mean, it's a part-time position. It is not a part-time position. Any elected official will tell you whether I'm looking at, you know, on the school board and Lynn and all you guys, you know, it is a, it, it, there's a lot of calls, but you know what? It's very gratifying. It felt good, no regrets. But time to enjoy the grandchildren for me and enjoy the Detroit Lions Super Bowl win, so. All right, next up, we're gonna go to announcements.
Okay, we've got one last meeting, a joint meeting of the E Course Creek Commission and Watershed Stewards. We're gonna do it at Carolyn Kennedy Library tomorrow at six. And I understand there's gonna be a presentation by the students involved with the Watershed Committee. So if you're available, it's close, please show up at six P M. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements from administration? All right, next up is public comments. Please come on up, you'll have three minutes. Please state your name, city and street. We have the honorable former Councilman Ray Muscat.
Can we give him an extra thirty seconds?
Actually, for Muscat, without even asking for it, he's gonna get an extra.
You know what? We're not even gonna time you. Take your time. It's honestly, that's, that's.
You know what? The wrong thing to do.
He deserves that.
That's the wrong thing to do. But anyway, thank you very kindly, Honorable Chair and Council, Honorable Mayor, Roger, Honorable City Council, our City Clerk, and our great secretary that doesn't get enough respect herself.
Absolutely.
Ray Muscat, Dearborn Heights, Havelock Street. Um, just first of all, I wanna wish our first responders a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and hope they have a safe, safe, safe near our police department, our fire department, who are always on call, twenty-four seven, okay? But I wanna discuss the three uh, positions. Uh, I'm very surprised that this was turned down. You spent two hours at a study session, two hours. And then we had a councilman that wanted another study session. I mean, what more do you really need? And don't forget, actuary reports are gonna tell you what the life of what we're gonna pay out as far as their, their, their retirement and their healthcare benefits. That actuary report is not gonna tell you how much money they're gonna save the city in the long run with the work that they're gonna do. You remember that, because that's the key. What are they gonna bring to the table? Okay, we went years in this city with people in positions that had no business being in those positions that cost us dearly. My good friend Zohair Abdallah and I spent many, many, many hours looking at things like that with controllers and, and, and HR directors and DPW direct, that really should not have been in these positions. And these people, if you want good leadership, you gotta put out money to get those good leadership people. They're gonna save you money in the long run. We were told time and time again, I personally asked, do we have any grants to do these lead water pipes? They were to, we were told, no. They didn't even bother to look at these grants. Shameful, the money that we lost in this city, eight hundred thousand dollars on an N S P program years ago that we lost back in two, two thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Unbelievable amount of money that this city has wasted and let go down the drain while other cities were getting grants to put roofs on their buildings. We let that go, and shame on this former council members, myself included, and administrative people, because it was wrong. We lost a lot of money. Remember that. This was, place was a mess for many years, okay? Let's try to fix it by going forward. We need these positions badly, just like we needed the engineer badly for many years. I darn if come to tears up there, looking at all these service contracts that nobody knew anything about. They gave us nothing, nothing at all, but all we did was pay out. We paid, 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 and we got nothing in return. We got a chance now to rectify that, and that's on you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ray, I just wanna say thank you for everything. Your heart is in the right place, my friend. You and I spent lots, lots of nights to discover what was wrong with the city. But I would have expected tonight, grand writer position more than anything. Because, let me tell you, just Dearborn got seventeen million dollars for parks and recreation.
And, and I agree with you on that, and that's something that you guys will deal with later.
Yeah.
And, and as far as this uh, money for the, the lawyers, you could set aside money in your budget. But don't forget, it takes each and every one of you to vote on when somebody wants to use it. You just can't throw your head up, say, I'm gonna go get a lawyer to spend that money. That's gotta be a, a, a council vote. You can put that money in your, in, in your account. We did it before. So you don't really need anything other than saying, budget time, I wanna put in fifty thousand dollars and a sentence. But each and every one of you have to vote to use that money. Remember that. Joe Schmuckadelli can't just say, hey, I'm gonna go get a lawyer. Remember that.
Can you spell that last name again, please?
And you promoted yourself just for the Lions, come on, you know that, okay?
My boys.
I haven't had, I haven't heard their name, Joe Schmuckadelli, in such a long time. Joe Schmuckadelli.
Thirteen more minutes, we can do it right here, four hours.
City, street name, please.
Hassan Sab, John Daly, Dearborn Heights. First off, Dave, again, thank you so much for serving.
Thank you.
Honestly, you've been a great asset to this city. You did a hard job, um, helping everybody out in the city and moving the city forward. Thanks again. I have an actual, uh, legitimate question. I have thirteen resolutions I wanna put on the first meeting. Who do I submit them to for the first meeting? To the clerk's office directly?
Council Chair.
You think I'm bad?
Correct, that's why I'm asking. So I'll go to you.
Yeah, it would come through.
At sixteen, I can, but I'm gonna hold off three to the second meeting. But I wanna, I wanna submit thirteen to the first meeting.
You would have to have that.
Thirteen, huh? Like Friday the thirteenth?
I say until four A M. the first meeting.
Better idea. Before the meeting, so a week before. No, January second.
Second. January. My birthday.
Keep in mind, I, I, okay, you talked to me in the clerk, but if you turn those in on January the first.
Or the third.
Then it'd be whoever the next council chair would have to approve on the agenda.
But we won't have a council.
I know. Then you just give it to the clerk.
So everything would go on that day.
And I will start the meeting on the fir, that first meeting of the year until we choose.
Right.
A council chair and check council.
Correct. Um, second is, the one thing I wanna discuss is what Councilman Baidun said about the disrespect. The incident we're talking about was yesterday, at an X seventy-eight meeting here. Again, the people that are hired, legally hired, whatever you wanna name it, to the city by the mayor, work for the people. Intimidation, disrespect, cussing, and it doesn't go well with anybody. Yesterday, we had an incident here where we were sworn at, cussed at and talked about on the hallways. These are the mayor's personal appointees, illegal appointees. So again, where does the buck stop? Just like all the councilmen said, we had a discussion with a few other city leaders around. They said if this kind of behavior happened, they would have been terminated on the spot. Mayor, I ask you, you always say you're in the military, you make moves, you make decisions. Make decisions and get rid of some puppets in this city. Thank you.
Oh. Vince. You go, love Vince call.
Thank you.
Here, thank your, your service as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Civil Service. Uh, I'm sorry, your microphone's off.
Is it green?
No, it's not working.
Let's try.
Oh, there it goes.
Can you do a favor, Gary? Can you start again?
Sure. Dave, you're the greatest guy ever. Well, I thought that's what you were looking for there. No, but once again, thank you very much, Dave, for all your service, and it was great working with you when I did. And Sue here, again, same thing for you. Thank you for your service.
And.
Um, just a, just a couple things. My understanding was that there was some statement made in terms of these, uh, the three positions. And that they weren't department heads, or they were. If they were, then the city council had to create the department under section five point one two of the charter. If they were not, then all the positions except for the city engineer had to be appointed through civil service under section five point one one B of the charter. Cuz if they're not department heads, then they would end up basically being covered by the all positions clause uh, of the uh, city charter. Namely, everything that's not a department head or exempt, an unclassified service becomes part of the classified service and has to be filled through civil service. So it's just like, um, it's just like, um, you know, when the mayor, uh, and Roger were talking about the one position at the Eaton Center, saying they had to go through civil service. All right, that same thing applies to these positions if they're not department heads. And again, you as a body have to approve there being a department, and you as a body have to approve, uh, basically a budget for those. Uh, the one thing I wanted to take exception to something that, um, Ray ended up saying. Um, I worked with for years Chris Sullivan and Elizabeth Saboda Perry. They were outstanding H R directors. Um, they were very well qualified. Uh, Chris Sullivan, I forgot what Chris's name, last name now is, but she had a bachelor's degree from the University of Michigan Dearborn in public administration with specialty in labor relations. She was very qualified. And in terms of Elizabeth Saboda Perry, not only did she have a bachelor's degree, but she also had an M B A. And both of them were outstanding in terms of their position. So I very, very much take exception with what, uh, with what Ray said. And with that, again, uh, thank you for your time. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and uh, Happy New Year to you as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next up. City, street name, please.
I'm back. Drapkowski Columbia Street. Um, to, to charge with just. Let's see. Uh, yeah, I could, if you could give it to Mr. Mayor, um, or, or if you wanna keep one. I'm sure one of them will end up in the trash. So.
Come on, Tommy, pass him over, buddy. Take one and pass it down.
Anyway.
This is the study session. We're here, it's nine o'clock.
Is this a study session?
No, thank you. This is default.
Anyway, I'm not sure if he's online or not, but uh, a while ago, I spoke with Mr. Percello over at the uh, the golf course and the, um, the clubhouse there. And we had talked about advertising and contacting the gentleman that is on the inside of that cover on the very first page on the left-hand side. I won't mention his name. He does this for Westland Garden City, and I think it'd be a good idea, if you looked into it, for promoting Dearborn Heights. This comes out, I believe, every other month. And if you're looking at it, you'll see that a lot of it is the business peoples within those cities. So I think it's a good idea to maybe take a look at it and um, maybe call him and ask him some questions. Uh, next thing I do wanna say is thanks to everybody who works for the city at the D P W Police Department. Fire Department. And all you that departments are out there. Uh, thank you for your service and thank you for your time. One thing I would like to say is, um, to the new council people going forward. Is we need to sit back and do some study sessions, not have these meetings without them. And then going into a six-hour meeting. That's, that's just kinda, you gotta sit, have those study sessions.
Thank you.
So you can talk about things. Um, and in the future, coming year, if I put it into a budget or whatever, we need some more ordinance people. Okay? We need more officers.
Ten more.
At least ten to fifteen more officers. Um, get them back up to a full staff. We need a traffic division. We have semis going through Dearborn Heights, they're blowing lights, up and down Telegraph Road with weights and scales. Dearborn has a weight and scale service. So those trucks are going through here overloaded. We could definitely get some penalty money from them. And um, we need to do some more with the building department. We need more inspectors for the housing. There's no reason why these seven thousand rental properties can't be inspected every two years. There's no way one person can do it himself. There's at least a few hundred dollars times the seven thousand homes that are inspected, plus all the businesses that need to be inspected. We can generate some money. So something to consider. Thank you for your time. Everybody have a Happy New Year and a Merry Christmas, whatever you need to celebrate. Thanks. Thanks.
Thank you, Vince.
Vince. Next up. Come on up.
Okay, my name's Ron Frenzy, live on Fairwood in Dearborn Heights. And today is the December nineteenth, and we're in the middle of uh, cold season. So people get colds, they get COVID, but before that, you usually have a stuffed up nose or runny nose, just like our treasurer, maybe. So what do you take? That's the main question. Well, you really take what's called a decongestant. This is, this, this topic is really for our general public. You really take a, you take a decongestant, which dries up your nose, which is fine, but the question is, what brand do you take? Okay, do you take Advil sinus, Benadryl allergy, Dayquil cold, Flonase headache, Mucinex maximum, NyQuil cold, Robitussin nighttime, Sudafed, Theraflu, or Tylenol? Which one do you take? Turns out, none of them work. These have been around for forty to fifty years. And you will see these are advertised every night on, on the T V programs. They're, they sell, they, they sell totally around five billion dollars worth, and they don't work a little bit. They don't work at all. So this, this report came out on September, September thirteenth in the Wall Street Journal, and a month later, C V S took them all off the shelves. So you can't find any of these anymore because they just don't work. But it's just terrible that when you hear a lie over and over again on the T V, radio, and if you hear it long enough, then it's just accepted. It's too bad. The other two, the other two sheets is, I was talking, I came to council meeting maybe three or four years ago, saying how bad the internet is, and especially these platforms of Microsoft, of Facebook and Instagram. Now you take the camera and you take the phone and you combine that with A I. And what you get is over the top. So these are four, these two pages are two, are, are four articles in the Wall Street Journal, how bad things have gotten on the internet. So over the holiday, if you come across kids, especially kids, maybe sixteen, seventeen-year-olds or later, read this article and maybe get them aside and mention that you shouldn't really be on these platforms. Because it's just, I don't wanna say what it is, it's impolite, but uh, it's really, really bad. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up. All right, now we're gonna go on Zoom. Uh, Steve Lobkovich, oh, kill that one. Steve L. Steve, please unmute.
I'll help you out.
Here we go.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, Steve Lobkovich. Tulane, Dearborn Heights, and also Act Seventy-eight President at this time. Uh, first of all, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to all of you. Uh, Mr. Abdallah, thank you very much for your service all these years.
Thank you.
And go Lions. Uh, I would like to clarify uh, something that uh, I know that you all received an email from one of the directors correcting my uh, statement from last week's council meeting. Uh, I made statements, uh, well, actually, I read from Act Seventy-eight itself, the opening paragraph. And I left it at that. Your meeting was extending beyond midnight. I didn't think you really wanted me to read the whole act. Uh, I'm sure you don't want me to read the whole act. Uh, what I said there was that the Act, Act Seventy-eight covers all personnel, paid personnel in the police and fire departments. I was corrected in the email that you received, uh, and several other people received saying that it doesn't cover civilians. I, I never attempted to allude to that, to that Act Seventy-eight was covering civilians. Sorry if you were misled. Uh, but I don't believe that I, uh, I said anything that would lead you to believe that I was talking about civilian positions uh, in the police department or the fire department. So anyway, I just wanted to make that clarification. Act Seventy-eight stands strong. It was voted in nineteen sixty-four by uh, twenty-plus thousand residents. Because what those residents said at the time was that when the charter was passed, the civil service that's listed in the charter was not good enough for police and fire, so they adopted Act Seventy-eight by their vote, by their resolution. And that's where Act Seventy-eight stands. That's where it was created and why it was created. So anyway, have a good holiday season, uh, and God bless you all.
Okay, thank you for your service, Steve.
Steve, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
The civilians in the police department, are they supposed to wear uniforms and carry guns?
Well, if you're asking my opinion, I would say no. Um, when, when I think of civilians in the police department, I think of secretaries and uh, you know, receptionists, that kind of employee. Uh, as far as carrying a gun or wearing a uniform, I would say, I get them off shooting from the hip, no.
Thank you, and have Merry Christmas, sir.
You too, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Jason Purcell from the Warren Valley Golf Course. Uh, Jason.
Thanks. Uh, happy holidays. I just wanted to commend and give kudos to the council and administration for your service. A special meeting on the week of Christmas speaks a lot about your passion for our community and the residents and local businesses certainly appreciate it. Also wanna thank and say that we'll miss the wisdom of Mr. Abdallah, Mr. Zuhair, and Mr. Muscat. All three of you have gotten to know over the last year. I hope that you'll be a consistent voice at these meetings moving forward. Again. Uh, some commentary about the assets at the golf course. Uh, we maintain an up-to-date equipment list with the makes, the models, the bins, and all of the city assets uh, owned at Warren Valley for insurance purposes. A good way to find out the extent of the city's assets is probably to look at the extent of what the city's insuring. And I can certainly say, uh, you know, they're, they're significant at Warren Valley, and I would think that an asset manager would make sense just given what I know about the equipment that the city owns at the golf course. There's also a question about the, you know, if, if you at council have permission to inspect those assets. Honestly, I haven't reviewed the, the language in that contract, but the answer is yes. Uh, we made equipment to operate the golf course with transparency, and that certainly extends to the city's assets that we maintain at Warren Valley. Thanks. Have a great holiday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else on Zoom? Madam Clerk, I don't see nobody unless you do.
Council Chair.
Okay.
I had an email from a resident. She asked me to read.
Yes, absolutely. So I, but then make it clear you're reading it. Okay, go ahead.
I am just reading, uh. Can you make it quick, please? I will make it very quick. No, this is the resident sent me an email, asked me to read it here tonight. You know, I wanna, you know, moving forward, it's, somebody else has gotta figure this. I feel like I'm always the bad guy. I hear a bunch of, it's councilman, you learned that? Where it says minutes. But it works.
One second.
Put the battery in. The battery in your, the, the battery's out.
Okay, it, it shouldn't take me three minutes. Uh, this was said, uh, on the senior coordinator position. This is an email that I received from Kristen. Uh, is all I'm gonna go with. Uh, Mo, I work as a senior, I worked at the senior coordinate coordinator at the Ian Senior for six years. During that time, I heard many times the position would be published due to be full-time, to which it never came to fruition. Even to this day, I did take a civil service test for clerical position and was told by Kim Constan that this position would need to be posted both internally and to the public indeed. I would need to take this different civil service test for the coordinator position and go through the interviewing process again, provided that I was. Keep going. Provided that I was, uh, one of the top three highest scorer for the civil service test. With that in mind, how was Patty Malloy, the Berwin Center Senior Coordinator promoted to full-time?
I, I'm gonna object to any, any specific people.
I am just reading an email. This is not me. This is Kristen.
I would skip the names. And even if you're reading it for her, it's as if you're in her.
Okay, I'm sorry. I will not give the name. Thank you, Roger. I know you're looking just to protect us, uh, or Kristen at this, for this matter. With that in mind, how was so-and-so, the Berwin's Center Senior Coordinator promoted to full-time status without the position being posted internal or external, having to take the civil service test nor go through any interviews? In quotation, I cannot verify if she did take the civil service test, but last I asked, she had not. My questions are, how was this position able to be promoted to full-time without the necessary steps? Will the position be postponed for the public to apply? Why is Kim not weighing in on the full-time position? P S go. Uh, my cell phone number is, and I will not give the lady's cell phone number. Okay, can anybody answer that? No? Okay. She's on. Okay, uh, our Recreation Director, Kim Constan, I'm sorry, Kim Launcelles on.
Hi. How are you?
Good.
Anyway, um, the coordinator at the Berwin Center did take the civil service test. The job was posted inside and outside, and um, she was um, offered the position. She rated the highest in the scoring, so. With that being said. Does that answer your questions?
Honestly, the question isn't mine to answer. I'm sure the resident's gonna go back and watch, listen to the video, so whatever you feel deemed necessary, please do.
Thank you, Kim.
Okay.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you, Kim.
I was here during that time and all of that happened.
We can't hear you. Wait, you're cutting off, Ken.
Okay, I was here, I was here during that time and um, all of the civil service regulations and rules were followed. Um, and that was um, under the uh, auspices of Elizabeth Perry as H R Director.
Okay, thank you. Any other motions from council members?
I motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by everyone, but starting out with Councilman Abdalhak. Any comments on that? Hearing that, all favor, please state aye.
I have a, I have a comment.
All right, go ahead, Chair.
This is your last ever adjourn. I love you, man.
Thank you. I love you too, brother. I bless you. All favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. I don't take chucks, I'm sorry.